Do you want me to, oh, here we go. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the South Haven City Council. Today is Monday, May 5th, 2025, and this meeting is called Order. Tonight's invocation is by Pastor Dan Davis of Life Bridge Church.
Mayor, City Council members, good evening and thank you. It's an honor and privilege to be here on behalf of the entire Life Bridge Church family. As we begin tonight's meeting, I'd invite all of us to bow our heads and our hearts for our opening prayer of invocation. Let's pray together. Great and gracious God, we come before you with humble and grateful hearts for all that you have done, for all that you are doing, and for all that you will do for the peace and the prosperity of this wonderful city called South Haven. We thank you for the beauty of its natural surroundings, for the heart of its citizens, and for the willingness of this council to serve and to listen and to lead and to love. May they do so with a unity of spirit and a oneness of purpose guided by a collective wisdom that is far greater than the sum of their individual parts. For the many challenges before them, would you grant this council a shared courage, compassion, and conviction that represents the will of the people and will lead them to the best solutions possible in the right way and at the right time? This evening, we especially ask for your blessing upon our interim police chief, Adam DeBoer. May his seasoned service grace our community with safety and stability as he stewards the role that has been entrusted to him. And for all of us in attendance tonight, help us to rise above our opinions and differences in the spirit of the golden rule, treating each other with the same respect with which we all want to be treated. Give us a healthy perspective of the past, a clear picture of the present, and a hopeful optimism for the future, one that sees the possibilities for a better tomorrow, both now and for the generations to come. Oh, Lord, hear our prayers as we commit this evening into your sovereign care, praying all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Megan, could we have a roll call, please?
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Annie Brown.
Here. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have three items. I would like, and I've provided a copy to everybody at City Council, and City Manager, Megan, and I believe a third copy was given to the City Attorney. I would like to add an agenda item under either Item 6 as 6D or under Agenda Item 8 as 8G, where the City Council will be asked to agree to store cellphones during the May 5th, 2025 City Council regular meeting and not access it during said meeting. I would like to add an item under Agenda Item 11 with regard to the budget that City Council will be asked to consider directing the City Manager to provide an itemized budget for each department under each fund to City Council no later than 5:00 PM on May 12th, 2025. And a new item inserted as Item 15, renumbering Items 15 to 19 as 16 to 20. Item 15 will become lifeguard program. City Council will be asked to consider, A, directing the City Manager to provide the draft lifeguard program developed by staff based on the report from Chris Brewster of the United States Life Saving Association no later than 5:00 PM on May 7th, 2025, directing the City Manager to provide an itemized estimated cost per, expenses close per, of that draft program no later than 5:00 PM on May 7th, 2025, directing the City Manager to provide no later than 5:00 PM on May 7th, 2025, the communications between the City and Chris Brewster of USLA regarding expenses, and D, determining the next steps. We can do them separately, or if someone agrees with all three of them, they could second them now?
Just to clarify on the phone use, my phone controls my hearing aids, so that's why I need to use it during meetings, so I can adjust the volume.
Okay.
Do you have some comments, Attorney?
I would just recommend that council have discussion on each item and then a vote on each item amendment proposed, and that way we can kind of, council can work through it in an orderly fashion, and everybody can make a determination on each proposed agenda item. And then, once the amendments are done, a vote on the original motion, which was the approval of the agenda, and it would be with any amendments that are adopted by council.
Okay.
So, in light of your comments, Mayor, I would withdraw Agenda Item 6D or 8G. For full transparency, I did inquire about use of cellphones at the 4/21/2025 meeting and was told by the mayor to file a FOIA request. But if it's for hearing aids for a personal matter, I would not object to that use.
Thank you. Okay, so the first item?
Would be the inserting Item 11A with regard to the itemized budget for each department under each fund.
Okay, so far, nobody has seconded the amendments to the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Do you want to vote on each separately?
Okay. We'll vote on each separate. Okay, let's discuss.
So, both the amendment to Agenda Item 11 and the newly added Agenda Item 15 appear to me to be micromanaging the City Manager, and I don't think that's necessary. Coming up with May 12th seems like a kind of arbitrary date. It's a week before our next meeting, but I have no idea if that's even possible or not. And for Agenda Item 15, some of those dates there are this Wednesday, and I don't know if that's even possible. So, I'm against these, both these Agenda Item additions.
So, for Agenda Item 11, I have requested this information. It has not been provided. I was forced to file a FOIA request, and nothing has been forthcoming. A response was due this past week with a 10-day extension. Still, nothing has been forthcoming, so this is an outstanding item for which we don't have a response.
If I may, if I may, so I talked with staff about this today, and there was a misunderstanding. They thought you wanted only the expenses and revenues for that particular fund, which they did provide you. It sounds to me-
No, they have not provided any specific items or funds. You, the first, so, this is, this is with regard to whether we have this as an agenda item. It's not to the merits of the agenda item. And if your staff have a question, they should have written me or contacted me. They know how to do that. They have not complied with FOIA. So, the, this is not micromanaging. It's requesting information that has not been provided in response to requests. And the only way to ensure the City Manager does something is for the City Council to direct it. Otherwise, she has no obligation to comply with a response. With regard to Item 15, at the April 21st meeting, the City Manager said she would have a response for us by, expenses for us by today. That is, in the minutes, draft minutes up for approval. At 3:45 on Friday, we were told that we would not be getting it. But in that email, she indicated there was a draft lifeguard program developed, and she indicated that there were draft expenses prepared. So, the timelines that I provided were based on her representations that this material is already ready, and it's giving her two business days from asking her to do that. And because she had indicated, staff had talked with Chris Brewster, in my understanding is that there were a couple emails back and forth. It should be minimal work, and that way we can see directly what Chris Brewster had said in light of the USLA report. And we have yet to determine next steps. That was made at a meeting, but it failed for a 3-3 vote, and we have a full City Council tonight, and so that would be helpful. And we, up until 3:45 on Friday, we were expecting the lifeguard program on today's agenda.
Kate.
I'm happy to share this spreadsheet out. I'm, that's perfectly fine, but I did raise in my email last Friday that I had a pertinent question that I didn't think was ready for an open session, so I'm happy to share it out. If you want to make it an agenda item, go for it. This is, this is the body, this is your agenda. This is what you all want to work on tonight?
Jeff.
I'll be voting now on both of these items. This is incredible amount of micromanagement. We had two budget meetings. If you needed more budget details, I don't know why you didn't ask those questions during that time. I'm also, I think that there's pending legal problems with the second item that it could impact one way or the other, and we're not ready to discuss lifeguards yet.
And once again, this is adding things to the agenda at the last minute. I didn't hear about adding the lifeguard item to the agenda until 6 o'clock. So, when it's not on the agenda, and we've gone over this before, it doesn't let the public know what's going to be discussed.
And as I said, we expected lifeguards to be on the agenda. We found out at 3:45 today, I'm, on Friday. And I had to decide what exactly I was going to request. It doesn't happen overnight. And Kate unfortunately called me when I was in a dead zone. Her message was seen about 4 o'clock when I called her back, so.
Well, may I?
Go ahead.
Um, I'll support putting both of these on the agenda for discussion, and then we can talk about it at the appropriate time and whoever will get a chance to vote.
Okay, do you want, what item would you like to vote on? 15?
I would say let's vote each one independently.
Okay.
Do a roll call probably.
Okay, what number do you want to start on? I don't even-
I would say Agenda Item 11A. Go sequentially.
Okay, 11A. And this is that the City Council will be asked to consider directing the City Manager to provide an itemized budget for each department under each fund to City Council no later than 5:00 PM on May 12th. And we'll have a roll call, please?
Arnold.
Oh.
Hosley.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
No.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Brown.
No.
Motion carries.
So, that is added on the agenda? And then, 15A?
Well, it'd be 15A through D. They're all together.
Okay. The items are, A, directing the City Manager to provide the draft lifeguard program developed by staff based on the report from Chris Brewster of the United States Life Saving Association no later than 5:00 PM on May 7th; B, directing the City Manager to provide an itemized estimated cost expenses of that draft program no later than 5:00 PM on May 7th; and C, directing the City Manager to provide no later than 5:00 PM on May 7th the communications between the City and Chris Brewster of USLA regarding expenses, and D, determining the next steps. Roll call? Oh, discussion.
Just for clarification, Kate, didn't we briefly discuss this, and you were prepared to give us an update on next City Council, or am I-
Yeah, I was planning on doing it the next City Council, yes.
So, would it be appropriate, and would it be acceptable, Mary, if the next City Council, she gave us an update on everything that you requested?
No, because we usually get the hot items after 5:00 PM on Friday, which gives us insufficient time to review it, especially if the draft program and the draft expenses are ready now. She can provide it to us under privileged communication, so we can look at it, and the final one, that's public, can come out on Friday, on the Friday before. But I need more than the weekend to review this amount of material.
It's not that much. It's a spreadsheet. It's a spreadsheet. It's not a list. It's not, it's not a lot of information. I'm sure we can put together the communication that we've had with Mr. Brewster. I'm just, it's a spreadsheet that we've been working on collectively.
Joe.
Question, Kate.
Yes, sir.
Is the 7th very difficult for you to do it?
I'll email it out today.
Okay. Then it's almost a moot point.
Okay, roll call, please?
Hosley.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
No.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Arnold.
No.
Brown.
No.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Now we have to approve the regular agenda.
Now, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Get that from George, seconded by-
Okay.
So-
Did do it with the additions?
Yes.
Two additions.
The two additions.
With the additions. Is there a motion?
There is a motion on the floor. So, all we do, all you need to do is either have other discussion or call for the question.
And there was a second, too?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, let's do another roll call.
You got it. Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Hosley.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, just a second while I organize this. So, it's going to be 11A. And Item 15. So, it's going to be 15A through D. Got it.
And then, and then 15 through 19 are renumbered to 20. I mean, 16 are renumbered one more.
I couldn't hear you. What did you say?
Oh, the, the original 15 through 19 renumbered to 16 through 20.
So, oh, it changes to 16 through 20?
Right, because it inserted a new 15, so the other ones would renumber by default.
Okay. Okay, so the agenda is approved. It's now time for a community update, and we have an update from the South Haven Business Hub by Debbie Howe.
I didn't get a presentation. Did you send it to Michael?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see if we can get it up.
If not, I'll use my phone.
Okay.
We'll allow that.
Thank you all for allowing me to be here. Hopefully, you received our annual report. It was like the end of January, first of February, when the snow was flying. Hopefully, you all received that, so you could take a look at it, but I'll provide you an update for today. In front of you are our rack cards, and appreciate the dollar support that you gave to help print those so we can put them around at the visitor center, at the chamber, local businesses, and things like that to make sure people know we're here. That's one of our biggest challenges, and it's making sure those who want to start a business or grow a business are familiar with what they, what we can provide to help support them, so. If you can't find it, I'll just, I can talk from my phone. Okay. So, who is the South Haven Regional Business Hub? For those of you who don't know, both in front of me and behind me, our mission is to help provide South Haven region with a support group that helps grow our ecosystem. So, we started with a group of entrepreneurs and business people who really had a passion for making sure our community had a strong ecosystem. We started as a grassroots organization. We came 501(c)(3) two years ago. So, we're pleased to be, be here and supporting. Our target audience is really what we call neighborhood businesses. Some, some people call them micro businesses, and you hear this, a lot of these terminologies in different venues around the region. But really, we help support aspiring entrepreneurs or those entrepreneurs who are there early start or those who are in what we call an early growth pattern. Okay, there we are. Look at you guys. So, yeah, if you flip to the next screen. So, this is who we are. And one more, please. Okay, what we do, we have several different programs that we support. We just finished our startup series, which is a series of seven workshops. It starts off with truth and myths about starting a business. Many people think if they're going to start a business, they're going to work less and make more. Er, wrong. So, we help guide them through the process of what it really means to have a business. How do you form an LLC, things like that? We started in, this program in January. This was the worst January in the whole wide world in Michigan to start a program. We had, what, three misstarts? So, we had to kind of keep switching them to different dates. But anyway, we got through them. We have, we had 52 people attend, 27 unique organizations or potential organizations. So, then, we're running the growth series right now. Applications were due May 1st. The growth series is for those businesses who are at least three years old, at least having $100,000 in revenue, and at least having one full-time employee. Our strategy with this program is to help them grow from maybe themselves to three people, to five people, to 10 people. So, we've had 13 applications this year. We hope to accept between six and eight into that program. The pitch is our finale of our growth series, so we run that at the end. And last year, again, we had to change that from December 5th to January because of the snow. We have peer-plus-peer groups that we're hoping to initiate. We have live workshops, other types of workshops. Tons of resources and templates online on our website that people can download, use, and all of this is free. We give them funding advice. We have what's called the Lakeshore Capital Consortium. So, if somebody needs some funding, we can help put them in contact with not only local resources like banks and credit unions, but what are called CDFIs and local investors. So, we kind of try to match them. Personal mentoring, this is actually probably one of the things I'm most proud of, is we have put together a strong resource, and you'll see them in this presentation, but also, if you want to take a look at our website, we have strong mentors who are entrepreneurs and business people alike who match one-on-one with our companies who are starting to either grow or start up. So, in the South Haven region now, we have like 14 different mentors, and we have subject matter experts, up to 20 of them. And those subject matter experts range in financial literacy, to marketing, to social media, to whatever you can think of that some new business may, may need support in. So, we've been building that, that venue. Yeah.
Next slide.
Thank you, Kate. Why we do it? I don't know if you read the statistics or know this, but 50% of all businesses who start fail in their first year. We really feel if they could have some support from people who've been there, done that, walked in their own shoes and know the resources available, that we could put that down to maybe half. And they just do. In their second year, 20% fail. So, why we do it is because of these people up here. And we have over 60 people we're now supporting. Now, some of them are in their early stage, still writing their business plans and haven't gotten there yet. But majority of what we do is help them build their business plans and give them the support that they need along the way to help to do that. So, jobs created in 2024. There's 96, so of our 60 people, there's 96 total employees, and we've created 39 new employees in, in 2024 by offering them our support through all the different resources that we have, and 13 new businesses have started in 2024. And you could kind of see all the different, our goals and things like that in here in the audience that we, I know that's small. I can't even read it. Need my phone. So, here's what I was talking about before. Here's our partners. Here's our supporters. It lists all of our subject matter experts, all of our mentors. Just in the last month, we've onboarded four new mentors from the local area. So, as I talk to this audience, if anybody wants to be a mentor, we'd love to have you along the line or a subject matter expert. But we also say, say thank you to all of our partners who helped make this come to fruition because all the services we do for these aspiring entrepreneurs or growth organizations is free of charge to them. So, we're supported by all these wonderful organizations, and we appreciate what they do to help make us get there. So, to date, of the dollars that you all have supported us with, we've done advertising on Cozy for both for our pitch and for the hub. We've designed those rack cards that you're seeing that we're now like kind of delivering all over the place so people know that we're here. We did run an ad in the Chamber newsletter that they have, so we're supporting that. And then, we've done some Facebook ads and special events. Anybody have any questions? That's it.
Mary?
So, how much do you guys get paid?
So, so, we get paid nothing.
That's what I thought. So, I'm just trying to give you a compliment by asking you the question. So, thank you for all you do and for helping our community grow and just, it's admirable.
Thank you. We, we do pay our, our consultants. We, we do pay our, our consultants, so I just want to be clear on that. The people who run our ads for us, our CPA.
Right, but the mentors?
Are all free.
Are all free, and that?
And our subject matter experts? There's a few subject matter experts in there that we do have to pay because they're small businesses themselves.
Right.
Right? So we wouldn't want them to donate a lot of their time. Although they do, we do have to pay, we do pay them as well. Just because you want to see them stay in business.
You do a lot with the, the money you get.
Yeah.
Because of your graciousness.
Oh, thank you, appreciate that, we do.
Wendy?
I just, again, like Mary, I want to compliment you. I personally started my own business about 36 years ago. And what really got me started and made, I think, a big part of my success was a personal mentor, which you do. There's things other businesses can tell you that are not in books. And I'll never forget the advice I got. He said, whatever your competition does, do it better. So if they start at seven, start at six. If they knock off at eight, work till nine. And it was a young woman, who I was young then, too. That was down the hall from me. We were in a business of about 15 businesses. And I remember working till 10 or 11 at night, and she was still there. And I would make sure when she walked to her car late at night, I'd keep an eye on her. But the two of us worked, both of us were successful. From the last I heard, she bought the building.
Cool.
So, yeah. And the mentor was so helpful to her and to me.
Yeah, you can, and maybe you can. But believe the stories of multiple people that you saw up there that we helped, that their cost of goods sold, they were paying more than they were selling it for. So when we came in and started going through the process of what is the cost of goods sold? What's your materials, what's your labor cost? They now could start making a profit. And what I tell everybody now here, and thanks to some of my supporters in the background, these people that we're supporting now are your young entrepreneurs, and probably young at heart, but also young in age. They're gonna be the next yous. They really are. And they're gonna learn. And they're gonna be the next mentors. So that's what we do. And we all have a passion for it. These guys, all of us.
Wendy, did you have a question?
Yeah. You may have touched on this, but I just wanted to clarify. Is there a criteria for what businesses you can help? Like, I know it's new businesses, but what if it's like someone just taking over the reins? Or they just need to reinvent the wheel? Okay. And then, does that include nonprofits as well?
Yeah, that's interesting that you say that. Because we're a nonprofit, we do support nonprofits. In fact, we probably have two that we're, we're helping right now. But our expertise is probably in the profit world. But we do have a few mentors who know the nonprofit world. So we have supported them. And, and there's one right now called Primal Outfitters. If you don't know who he is, Joshua Gunnin, you gotta meet him. He's a retired vet near, vet. And he runs a fishing business out, out of town here that brings disabled first responders out fishing for free. And he's a US Marine Corps vet. So we're helping him because he needs a new doc. So, yeah, so we do, but not as much as I would say for profit.
Gotcha, thank you.
But anybody, any race, any color, any, anywhere they live here in this. They do have to be in Marion County currently because that's where our mentors and subject matter experts are. And we're kind of like looking into Marion County as well.
Gotcha, thank you.
With the entrepreneurs you're working with this year, how many live in South Haven?
So that's a good question, because Michael needs back here. I get confused with the 49090 and live in South Haven. I did that, there's probably, do they live in South Haven? Or do they have a business in South Haven? Right? So there's a little bit of a difference. Because we have probably 18 who have a businesses here in South Haven. But do they live here in South Haven? Not all of them do. So out, out of that, you have 18 businesses, give or take one or two, but that are operating here in South Haven that we support. We help Sierra Rose, if you know her. If you want a tattoo, go to her, telling you. We help Kitchen Tribes get started. Trying to think of some of the other organizations right here in town. And you've heard me talk about BP Bags and Boards. We just got him a manufacturing facility here in town to, to put together his, his bags and boards. So quite a few of them, or up to 18 of them, are right here directly in the city.
Thanks. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate your time. Look at our website.
Next, we have an update from Michigan Flywheelers Museum by Patrick Ingles. Good evening.
Hi, thanks for the invite. Just a brief history of the museum. We've been around this area since 95. We own 80 acres out on 68th Street. And we are a nonprofit that puts on several events throughout the summer. Some of these pictures are of our first events, which was down in Hartford. This is a picture of our first meeting that we had in our first building that we have at the Michigan Flywheelers Museum. This is one of the first buildings that we moved in. We were given this log cabin, and we jacked it up and put it on a trailer and hauled it in on a Sunday permit, which we don't do that anymore. This is our barn. It was given to us, and we hauled it in and started restoration on it. And that building is fully restored right now. And we've added bathrooms onto it and an addition. We have Farm History Day, which is coming up this Friday. Farm History Day is a kids' event. We have brought in the most upwards of 2,500 kids through our museum in, in five hours. It is very busy. It takes about 80 volunteers to put this event on. And we've done it for, boy, I can't tell you how many years, but it's, it's over 30. And it's a very fun event. We do draw shaving, cross-cutting saws, corn grinding, corn shelling. We have a sawmill that runs. We have a shingle mill that'll operate. And all of our buildings are open. And that is a free event for the kids. This is flower sifting. We realize that a lot of times, people didn't, young kids or people don't realize some of the old ways that things were done. And so these are flower sifters. At the end of the day, that flour is very much powder. It's been run through there so many times. We also have a couple washing stations set up. And kids can wash clothes, so they don't realize how it's done in the past. This is our painting the barn. This is one of our simpler events. We just put out some cans with water and some paintbrushes and let the kids paint the barn. This is just some of the pictures of down through our town. This is candle dipping. We, it's one of our longest lines that we have. And we actually melt wax and then cut string and let them dip candles. This is corn grinding. Our show is in September. And we fill the 80-acre property on Saturday. It's hard to find a parking spot. We bring upwards of, for our four-day event, we'll bring upwards of 10,000 people through our gates. It's a very busy weekend. We sell corn. We have a, an old steam engine that we steam corn. Steamed corn is different than boiling it, it's much sweeter. And this is our future. We support a lot of kids' activities because they're what's gonna take over our event as we all grow older. And we do have several kids' activities during our show. This is Josh Gates. He was in South Haven a few years ago. And he came to our show just as a side event. And he asked about doing a few things. And we said if he ever ran a sawmill. And so he said no. And so we let him run our sawmill. He was quite thrilled. We are planning on becoming more of a destination. We intend on opening more than the limited weekends that we are open currently. And we have finished our barn off. We do rent the barn out for weddings. So that is available, and we've been doing that since the barn was moved there. That's a, pictures inside the barn. We were presented with this award from the Michigan Barn Preservation Network. They told us that our barn is one of the unique design barns that they've seen. It has horizontal siding instead of vertical siding. And they said that is very unusual. We rely on volunteers. We have about 300 members in our museum. And we've done a lot of construction activities in the past. We currently have over 20 buildings on site. And most of them we've worked on are built. Move to the next one. This is one of our volunteer luncheons that we put on. Go to the next. This is our gift shop that we had built. That was one of our early buildings to build. This was construction of our church that we built. We looked around our local neighborhood for a church that we could move in. We prefer original buildings to move. And we could find none that were physically able to move or they had lease deed problems. So we ended up building a church. That's a picture of the church and the volunteers that worked on it. Our next big project that we're working on is we were giving a train that came from the House of David in Benton Harbor. And it was one of the, of the three steam engines that the House of David actually built. They planned on building six, but they only built three. And when the, they pretty much wore it out. And Hanson Engineering and St. Joe used, the owner of that used to ride the trains as a youth. And he bought two of them. The third one is in Finley, Ohio. The, ours was given after they restored it. And the third one sits in the Hanson Technology Center window. Down at the Lake Michigan College. So this was early on when we started laying the track. And that was some volunteer kids that were rolling out some, some ground cover. And so full steam ahead. We are moving ahead with the Black River Railroad. We've started two years ago doing this project. It's quite a project to undertake. We got to deal with Alara for licensing. And we have ASTM standards that we have to abide by. And so it's been quite a learning process. This is a picture of the engine that we have. It is operational, it is a steam engine. We have five cars that go with it. And our plan is in the future that we will have weekend train rides. And we are in the process of building the track right now. We are planning 6,000 feet of track, so a little over a mile. And we have a half a mile of track installed. And we've started working on it for this year already. So we're gonna be moving ahead with that. And possibly, we might be finished with the track this year. That's one of the pictures of installing the track. It is very labor-intensive to do it. A lot of backbreaking work. And we have quite a dedicated crew. We've had upwards of 14 people been showing up on work weekends to, to lay track. And these guys right there have gotten to the point where they can lay up to 450-foot of track in a day. So that's moving right along. These are a couple of the guys that after you put the track down and you add ballast, then you have to remove the ballast so that you expose just the top of the ties. And so that was a kind of a nice picture, I thought. Our local support is Fleming's Brothers, Myers, Walmart, Consumers Energy, Honor Credit Union, Historical Society of Michigan, Steiners Tractor Parts, and Harding's Friendly Markets, among others. We get a lot of donations from just the public. We do not accept any grants from government entities. So all of our funding is done by donations. This is another picture of the track. So it's where will the tracks take us? It's gonna be that circle of 6,000 feet. And this is just some of the, a picture of how we actually install the ballast on the base and compact it, and then install the railroad ties. And the rail gets fastened to that, and then add additional ballast on top of that. This is an aerial photograph of what the track will look like. It's basically around the outside of the property. So additional fundraising that we're gonna be looking for from the public or anybody that would be interested in helping us is we need to build a depot. And we're gonna end up building a roundhouse and a car barn for storage of this train. That's a picture of, of the roundhouse. And that's some of the locations of the buildings. That's a bigger picture of the train. That was taken down at Eden Springs at the House of David. And that is the picture of the train that we actually have. So I'd, anybody that could give us some assistance, we sure would appreciate it. And there are different ways to donate. We have QR codes set up. We do have a webpage with the QR codes through PayPal and also through the South Haven Community Foundation. Any questions?
Any questions?
Wendy? I just want to say that this is so amazing and awesome to have right here in our backyard. I think you guys do a great job, so thank you. And I just wanted to see, like in regards to volunteers, have you tried local high schools with some of the kids looking for community service hours? That could be a good connection.
We, we have done that, and we have not had any takers on it.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's nice to have that out there. Hopefully you'll find some more help.
Yeah. And Farm History Day is this coming Friday. If anybody's available, if they want to swing by, it's open.
Thank you.
Yes.
What are the hours for the History Day?
Farm History Day, it starts at nine and runs till two.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything you do. It really is an amazing and unique museum. So we're proud to have it in our area.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation to read honoring the South Haven Rotary and the installation of a peace pole. Whereas in 1955, Japanese poet, philosopher, and spiritual leader Masahisa Goy initiated a global movement for peace by proponing the message, "May peace prevail on earth", to mark a decade of peace following the devastation of World War II, and?
Whereas since that time, over 250,000 peace poles have been installed around the world as enduring monuments to peace, unity, and human understanding, and?
Whereas Rotary International, through its mission to promote peace, goodwill, and conflict resolution, has adopted the peace pole as a symbolic and educational tool to encourage, encourage global harmony and dialogue, and?
Whereas there are currently only three Rotary-sponsored peace poles in the state of Michigan, making the installation by the South Haven Rotary Club a significant and noteworthy achievement, and?
Whereas the Mental Health Committee of the South Haven Rotary Club has dedicated several months to thoughtfully planning and coordinating- several months to thoughtfully planning and coordinating the installation of a peace pole within the city, and...
Whereas the South Haven Rotary Club, with nearly 70 years dedicated service to the residents of our city, continues to exemplify the spirit of service above self and has once again united the community to promote the ideals of peace and cooperation, and...
Whereas the ceremonial installation of the peace pole in Stanley Johnson Park was met with enthusiastic support from the local community as well as Rotarians and visitors from across the region who gathered to witness and celebrate this historic event. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Annie Brown, on behalf of the City of South Haven, hereby officially recognizes and supports the installation of the peace pole in Stanley Johnson Park and endorses its message of hope, unity, and peace for all people. May peace prevail on earth. And we have John here to accept it. Go ahead. You have some comments?
Just a few. I would like, this is the second time in, what, four days that you've been able to read the proclamation, so I really appreciate that. This was all part of our district Rotary Conference, which was held at the Maritime Museum Friday and Saturday this past week, and we had somewhere close to about 300 Rotarians present. And part of that program was on Friday afternoon, the installation of the peace pole. And this was an idea I had, shared it with, I chair our Mental Health Committee for our local Rotary, and it was an idea I had, and our committee supported it, our board supported it, then after a few months of planning. And with three trips out to Stanley Johnson Park with Aaron Preby, the Superintendent of Parks, we finally identified the best location for that. So I really appreciate Aaron's involvement with that. And also for attendance, I know Mary and George were able to attend. Michael, the Assistant City Manager, was there, and Bishop Wilkins also did the invocation. So it was a great, it was a great program, and it's just so appreciative, I'm just so appreciative for the city to recognize our local Rotary and the installation of this peace pole. As mentioned, there's only three other communities at this point in the state of Michigan that have actually installed one. The best, the best we're aware of worldwide, there's somewhere between 10,000 to 15,000 that have been installed, being sponsored by local Rotaries. But there's about 250,000 throughout the whole world, so with that, I'm, any questions?
Thank you.
Picture. Mary, you may have to move across. I think I might forget everybody. There we go. All right, thank you. Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It is now time for a public comment for items on the agenda excluding items scheduled for public hearing. You have up to five minutes, and as you heard, lifeguards are on the agenda now.
Hi, Nancy Nat, 125 Elkenberg. We're giving proclamations tonight for people who do good for the community. I'm not here to toot my own horn, but I'm here to support and advocate for those people who have lost children, adults, on our beaches through drownings. And I doubt I'll ever get a proclamation, but I feel that the work we've been doing is something that should be at least acknowledged. A lifeguard program was a priority for 2025. The money was budgeted for this program, and yet we have been waiting for a month trying to get answers regarding lifeguard program. Taxpayers have paid for an expert. All of the questions and concerns should have been answered by now. The words we continue to hear, liability, cost, on and on and on. This has been going on for years. All of these excuses are stall tactics. Other beaches like St. Joe and New Buffalo have successful programs. Why is this so difficult for South Haven? The continued stall tactics make it impossible to have lifeguards for Memorial Day of 2025. Once again, the risk of someone drowning on our beaches is much higher than it would be if we had a lifeguard program. You had an opportunity once again, and nothing is going to happen for this beach season. Thanks.
Thank you.
John Lorstoffer, 23 Delaware. I'm here to address item nine, which is on the short-term rental ordinance. I attended the April Planning Commission meeting, and in that packet were several proposed amendments to this ordinance, and I supported the one that Councilwoman Housley had suggested, and I'd hope it's going to be considered tonight. The most important is a definition of what constitutes a short-term rental lawful nonconforming use. I think this protects the city, but it also protects the property owner, because the definition would be it's one in which the first and all subsequent registrations were granted that met the requirements under the existing law at the time. I think it's important to have this clarification, so if something comes up, you have some kind of standard to review. Again, I think it protects the property owner and the city if this issue arises, and I hope you'll consider these amendments later tonight when you consider the ordinance. Thank you.
I'm Kristin Ayers. I live at 612 Kellum Zoo Street, and I'm going to speak on the lifeguard issue. Sue Canning wrote a letter to the editor about this issue, and I'm just going to read the first two paragraphs. Let me start by saying that I am 100% in favor of preventing people from drowning. No amount of money spent to prevent drowning is enough, but before we can prevent any drownings, we need people, local and tourists, to respect authority, and I couldn't agree with that more. In addition, we need to stop blaming others, and people need to be responsible for their actions and choices, and then use common sense. We have drivers' training classes, rules of the road, and police. Does that prevent traffic accidents, drunk and texting drivers, death or serious injury? Prevent crime? No, it's a deterrent, but it doesn't prevent it. Does having a fire department prevent fires? We have signs on the beach and in businesses. We have flags with explanations that are universal colors. Red, stop; yellow, caution; green, go. Same as at a traffic light, but one still proceeds through with caution. My drivers' training teacher said, "You may be right, but you don't want to be dead right." We have beach patrol, ring buoys, and life jacket stations. The only way to be totally safe is stay out of the water. What about before and after lifeguard hours? Rainy days? People have drowned in the winter. I was a lifeguard and swim instructor at camp and privately in the 60s and 70s for a summer job then. It was adequate pay. I also had to show up because I lived at camp, so there was no issue there. But what will the pay be in 2025, and how are we going to make sure the staff shows up and they're well-trained? I think that the city has done a good job regarding beach safety. It is time for people to take responsibility and use common sense wherever they are. Stop blaming others and looking for scapegoats. The beach shooting was a terrible incident several years back. So do we arm the lifeguards with guns, too? We all have a duty to make this world a better and safer place. That means you and me together. I think South Haven made a great effort to ensure safety at our beaches. Thank you.
Real quick, Eric Cook, 834 Congress Street. I just wanted to let you know on Agenda Number 13, if you do have any questions, I am here to answer, in regards to the Sheriff's Department's Marine Division shed that's on there, so.
Good to see you. Thanks for being here. Anybody else? If not, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through F?
I move to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
I would move to remove the minutes of April 21st, 2025, from the City Council, the regular minutes.
Do you want, do you want to just remove it, or...
Remove B, because I have two proposed amendments that I had provided on Friday of last week to everyone.
So you want to discuss it later? Is that what you're saying?
Yep, discuss it separately.
Okay, we'll move it to the new 18A, which is City Manager's comments. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Housley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
And Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are now at old business. The City Council will be asked to discuss and consider a motion to adopt the proposed short-term rental zoning ordinance 1099, and you see the sections on your agenda. Kate?
Thanks, Mayor. This is our, hopefully, ready to put this ordinance to bed. That's the hope here. We've been working on short-term rentals for some time. This is the short-term rental zoning ordinance, and there's been a lot of discussion with stakeholders, with the work group, with city staff, and I understand that Councilmember Housley has proposed a number of amendments. City staff have been reviewing the proposals that she sent last Friday, and some of these have changed a little bit, so I may defer to Zoning Administrator and Attorney Eberly. But one thing that we were really concerned about is making any changes that would need this to go back to the Planning Commission, because I get the impression that we've had a lot of discussion on this, but I think this board is ready to make a motion today. We have talked about some of these terms, which I understand Member Housley believes that they would bring some clarity. I guess I can see for myself that sometimes they may look like it's adding clarity, but it might cause some confusion, because state law really controls some of these items. But I believe, based on some of what we just saw right now, that these changes would not necessarily result in going back to the Planning Commission. Is that correct, Dave?
I guess I'll ask Council, do we want to discuss all the changes that Councilmember Housley provided, or do we want to move through the amendment process and then discuss them as we go through the process?
Discuss them as we go through the process? Would that be the better way?
There are just four, and it may facilitate to resolve whether they would or would not be incorporated. That would affect the motion that would be to adopt.
Again, I completely defer to Council. I just, the same way, we could do what we did when we did the regulatory one, in which case we can throw the zoning ordinance up on the screen. Somebody wants to make a motion, and that motion's second, and we could have discussion, and then Council could work through separate amendments and then discuss and vote on separate amendments just to keep everything clean. I will note in the staff report that staff is proposing one minor change to Section 2203.06, as indicated in the staff report, crossing out structure and changing it to building, as indicated in the staff report, just to, I think that was just an oversight on our part.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance as it is in number nine now?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance as it is laid out without amendments, other than the amendment in the staff report.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's have a roll call, please.
Well, no, so this is where I would move to amend under Section 2, Amendment of the South Haven Zoning Ordinance, Section 201.19 of Article 2. After the definition of short-term rental, insert the new definition of short-term rental lawful conforming, colon, "a short-term rental for which the first and all subsequent registrations were granted that met the requirements under the existing law at the time, and any possible vested right has not otherwise been abandoned." Do I have support for that amendment?
Can you repeat that again?
So it's exactly as I read from, oh, so I delivered a copy. So this is exactly as it was sent out on Friday?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. So short-term rental, comma, lawfully conforming, colon, "a short-term rental for which the first and all subsequent registrations were granted that met the requirements under the existing law at the time, and any possible vested rights, vested right has not otherwise been abandoned."
Can I ask a question? So we've heard from Mr...
So I think we first should have a support for discussion?
Well, I'll support for discussion. But I know Mr. Lorstoffer supported this as well, so I'm just wondering, Dave, if you could tell us if you find that necessary or not to have that in there?
Absolutely, and for the public, I believe we're working on getting it up on the screen. So this is a question that has been raised both at the STR Work Group, at the Planning Commission, and I believe we've discussed it in front of Council as well. My recommendation on this issue remains the same, and I recommend not adding the definition for the reasons that, one, lawful nonconforming can be somewhat hard to define; two, no other use is called out in this manner. There's already a section in the zoning ordinance addressing lawful nonconformities for any use, for any structure. So I see this as somewhat unnecessary and cumbersome. I disagree that it provides clarity. Again, I think it's deviating from the norm, and I think it just muddies the waters. That said, this is Council's ordinance. This is Council's prerogative. If Council is inclined to proceed with the definition, I would suggest a slight modification to the one provided by Councilmember Housley. I would suggest that the definition read, "A short-term rental that was in compliance with all requirements under existing law at the time the use was established, and any vested right that has not otherwise been abandoned." So my primary recommendation is not to add it for the reasons we've discussed, recognizing this as Council's ordinance and Council's prerogative. If Council is inclined to move forward with amending it, I would suggest those edits.
I just want to, I just need some clarification. So the short-term rental work group worked for weeks and hours on this, and so they came to the consensus on the existing definition of short-term rentals?
Correct. When this, when this issue was discussed in the work group, the same concerns were raised, and I expressed my same concerns as to why I believe the definition should not be added. My understanding was that the compromise was we will not add the definition to the ordinance, but as part of the program rollout, staff will provide some guidance similar to what had been... but as part of the program rollout, staff will provide some guidance similar to what had been provided by Councilmember Hosley in Version B at the Planning Commission, which was more of a checklist of what ordinance was in effect at what time. And that this issue would, the clarification would be provided more administratively as opposed to an amendment to the ordinance. That was my understanding.
By the city staff?
Yes, as part of the program, FAQs rollout. We haven't quite decided how we're going to do it, but that would be the goal, to address the concern for clarity while recognizing that we don't call out any other use and define it in terms of lawful nonconformity, that we would provide clarity in the FAQs, but not amend the ordinance. That was my understanding, moving out of the workshop. That was the same discussion we had at Planning Commission as well.
And Mary and George agreed on that, or came to consensus?
I'll defer to Councilmember Sleeper on that.
Well, we defer to each of us. Defer to each of us. We were both there.
Excuse me? We're going with George?
And then with me, because we were both involved.
My understanding was that when we left, we had agreed on the ordinance the way it was.
Thank you.
Point of order. I was also involved. And this suggestion came to me from John Lorstorfer, a municipal attorney who has a track record of looking out for our residents. And he approached me realizing that zoning, short-term rental, lawful, nonconforming was not defined. And he also has identified that zoning compliance determination references the current, compliance with the current law. So this comes into play to ensure that the 2016 and the 2018 ordinances are followed to the letter of the law when making the zoning compliance determination to avoid cherry picking which factors will be applied or not. If you will recall, I had asked for a good faith effort for a checklist so that we would know what was and was not being considered. But I was told that was too onerous to do in the short time, which I said was fine. However, I did not say that this should not be included. As things were brought to my attention, I raised them. And John Lorstorfer is who brought the short-term rental lawful, nonconforming to my attention. So as we publish things, people brought stuff to my attention, and I incorporated it. As other rough drafts got finalized and I noticed holes, I would add things where there were holes. So in light of the fact that the municipal attorney, John Lorstorfer, actually provided this language to me when I went to him, because it was apparent that our current attorney did not like what I had pieced together and had not provided an alternative language to that point. And I obtained that from, I obtained this from him over the weekend. And so, yes, that's what, or I had sent it out on Friday. So this is not my definition, and so I take exception with people continually saying it's my recommendations. This is what I am recommending based on discussion with people like John Lorstorfer, who was a retired, who is a retired municipal attorney, and whom I have found much more receptive to concerns of residents.
If I may, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I greatly respect John, and clearly we have a difference of opinion on this. But our office serves as the city attorneys for the city of South Haven. And when we offer an opinion, we are on the hook in terms of liability, and we're not able to offer. There's a different relationship there than any attorney selected off the street. Again, I have great respect for John. Two, again, nowhere else is a use defined in terms of its lawful nonconformity because we address lawful nonconformities as a separate section. Three, zoning compliance determination states, "a written determination issued by the zoning administrator that specifies whether a used structure or lot complies with the current requirements of this ordinance, has been granted to variance, or is lawful, nonconforming." So as part of that analysis, you would determine whether or not it was lawful, nonconforming or not. Again, this is Council's ordinance, and I'm happy to do whatever Council wants. To the point that I'd never provided a revised draft of the term lawful, nonconforming. The reason for that was, at the STR work group, it was my understanding that a compromise had been reached. And although Councilmember Hosley may have requested it when we were in front of Planning Commission, Planning Commission never requested it. And when we were in front of this body, this body never requested it. Had this body requested it, I would have been happy to do that, but it was never requested by this body. And it would be inefficient of our office to continue to revise things based solely off the desires of one member of Council that's not supported by either the Planning Commission, when we're in front of the Planning Commission, or this body. We serve the City Council.
So with that, so we have this amendment on the table for this language. I can have Dave read a suggestion from the City Attorney's Office. What would Council like to do?
I have some more comments. So I spent over a year on a committee redoing our zoning ordinance. And the reason for that effort was because the zoning ordinance had gotten to the point where there were items in the zoning ordinance that were strictly against state law. There were items in the zoning ordinance that conflicted between sections. And how we got there is just by doing this sort of thing. By not following the process, by bringing in last-minute changes without going through the process of having it go through Planning Commission, having it go through Williams &amp; Works, which was the group that helped us come up with our new zoning ordinance. This first change here, it adds a definition, but nowhere in the body of the zoning ordinance do we use that term. So why are we adding a definition when we don't even use that term? It doesn't make sense for that year that I spent looking at the zoning ordinance to add this section in there. Sorry, that's what I feel.
Thank you. Joe?
I feel like, as a councilperson, I'm put in a precarious position because I'm not an attorney. Mary is, you are, John is. And it gets very difficult as a layman sitting here trying to judge whether this or that statement or your statement should be in there. We are paying you to help make the decision for us, to guide us. So my question to you is, and maybe also to Mary, is with your statement that you said would accomplish the same thing, but maybe, I don't want to put words in your mouth, maybe a little more acceptable to the way your law firm thinks it should be done. Would the way he stated it, Mary, accomplish what you're doing in here, but not go against what your law firm is advising? Am I saying that, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. I just would clarify the point that I'm still advising you not do it. But again, Council's free to do what Council wants to do. And understanding that there may be support for this, I've offered some suggested changes that I think would bring it closer to something our office would be comfortable with.
And would the suggested change that you just made keep this from going back to the Planning Commission?
Yes. I believe that because the Planning Commission, when they did their public hearing, there were two versions proposed. Version B had this definition, although in a different form. Again, we're dealing with some gray area here, but I would be of the opinion that because we're dealing with the same definition and trying to get largely at the same concept, that the wordsmithing would not require it to go back to planning. But again, this was a different, an earlier draft of this definition. Was it planning? And then Planning Commission obviously recommended that it not be included.
Kate?
Yes.
Was John Lorstorfer involved in the short-term rental work group?
He wasn't part of the work group, but he was a stakeholder that we did meet with.
All right. Is he on the city's payroll as an attorney?
No, no, Mayor, he's not.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
My comment, just like Joe, I'm not a lawyer either. But Dave is the city's lawyer, and our city's lawyer is telling us not to do this. And if the Council, so I'm planning to vote no. If the other majority wants to continue with this line, I highly recommend then you go with the alternative that Dave offered.
Mary?
Yes, so I actually, John Lorstorfer, sent an email with regard to his involvement. He met about an hour. George and I were not included in that discussion. And John indicated that they briefly discussed the term short-term rental lawful, nonconforming, and he believed that should be in the definition, so it is recognized. And also, there are some guidelines that we have as to what is meant by lawful, nonconforming use. Also discussed the term rental use and having only two rental terms in any seven-day period, among other things. But, and in addition to changing may to shall. So, and I do appreciate the recognition that Version B was in front of Planning Commission. They opted not to discuss it. And the changes were also not discussed at Planning Commission because the chair just cut off the discussion and requested that I send it in in writing. So there were opportunities that were truncated at the Planning Commission for a more vetted discussion.
I'd like to request that we focus on the amendment, whether may and shall and Plan Bs at Planning Commission. I'd rather, we've talked about this amendment.
Okay, are you ready to vote?
Can I ask a question? Yep. Will you repeat the definition that you provided?
I mean, type?
Yeah. "A short-term rental that was in compliance with all the requirements under the existing law at the time the use was established, and any vested right that has not otherwise been abandoned."
Has that what?
Otherwise been abandoned.
So that still doesn't change the fact that this is a definition that is not used in the body of the zoning ordinance. So it's not a good idea to have just a definition floating out there when you don't have anything you're referring to in the body of the zoning ordinance. The definitions are supposed to clarify what's in the body of the zoning ordinance. This is the kind of process that messes up our zoning ordinance because we try to do things on the fly. Now we've got words up there that haven't even been through the Planning Commission or Williams &amp; Works, and we're, this is how our zoning ordinance got in the state, it got into.
And I will clarify it, although I think, again, it's a gray area, it would be appropriate to proceed. I think if Council is inclined to include this definition, the better course of action would be to then send something back to Planning Commission, say, hey, Planning Commission, we want to include a definition for short-term rental lawful, nonconforming. Please move through that process.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion already?
We do.
And it's on?
It's for the written, what's written here that Councilman Hosley provided.
Okay. Got it. Okay. And was there a second?
There was.
Okay. Let's do a roll call.
You got it.
So, did you want to?
So we are voting on the language?
No, I think that the motion on the floor is for Member Hosley's language. This is, this is not, well, I've just typed here, that's the attorney's version, but that is not under the, what's the motion on?
Right, so that's what I was just inquiring whether there was?
On the attorney's language.
Well, unless somebody amends the motion to be the attorney's language.
Well, we have a motion right now, so.
Which can be amended.
We're gonna go, roll call, please?
Got it. Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
No.
Reeser?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. Is there another motion?
Yes. A motion to amend under Section 18, Amendment of South Haven Zoning Ordinance, Section 1904.37 of Article 19, Item 2, changing the may to shall. And so striking may, adding shall, and striking or traffic congestion, and inserting therein or the creation of unreasonable traffic to the premises, such that, that item would read, "no short-term rental shall be operated in a manner that constitutes a nuisance to adjoining land uses by the creation of excessive noise, smoke, odor, or the creation of unreasonable traffic to the premises." Is there a second for discussion, at least?
A second.
So the reason I am making this amendment is traffic congestion, I find, is too subjective, and that unreasonable is a term frequently used in legislative purposes. And traffic to the premises should encompass all aspects of traffic to the short-term rental. And this part was taken from a recommendation from Williams &amp; Works that legal had modified to traffic congestion. But as I said, I prefer a, I prefer Williams &amp; Works' term over that. I had initially provided more, including everything that Williams &amp; Works had done, but upon reflection, I have only added, switched out traffic congestion for the creation of unreasonable traffic to the premises.
Okay. There was a motion and second. Any other discussion? George?
Yeah, this is, again, we're doing this on the fly. This wording is even different than what we saw on Friday come through. We're trying to change our zoning ordinance on the fly. This is not the way we should be doing it. To me, all we're changing is the difference between traffic congestion and the creation of unreasonable traffic to the premises. It says the same thing. We don't need to be doing this on the fly like this.
And we are not, it's changing may to shall, which we have raised numerous times, that we prefer to be mandatory. It actually is very similar to what I sent on Friday. The only difference is I have struck electrical disturbance, night lighting, and parking, and simply left, or creation of unreasonable traffic to premises. That's identical to what was sent on Friday. And again, that was what Williams &amp; Works had suggested. And Williams &amp; Works had suggested mandatory shall as opposed to discretionary may. And it was in the Version B that was in front of the Planning Commission, but opted not to be discussed.
Any other discussion? Attorney, any comments?
Again, I think this change would not require it to go back to the Planning Commission. I always recommend, if you are making a change, that sometimes it's better to send it back to the Planning Commission and get their thoughts. On the may to shall issue, I won't rehash that issue because we've discussed it somewhat at length. But to characterize, may in this context is permissive, and shall is mandatory, fails to understand how may in the negative sense prohibits similar to shall. So I don't think that's an accurate statement regarding how the English language. So again, Council's prerogative on this one. I don't have any objection to the change. It's just a matter, from legal's perspective. Again, this is a policy question for Council.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And under Section 20, Amendment of South Haven Zoning Ordinance, Section 2103 of Article 21, Item 4, striking other, inserting a therein, inserting after that has been determined by the zoning administrator to form, striking us, a single cohesive development. Do I have a second for discussion?
I'll second.
So I had suggested this change and was reinforced by the discussion at the previous city council meeting of concern of things being identified as resorts. And this way, we, it's clear that it's by the zoning administrator, it's each development in itself. Better ensures a written record for this determination, and I think it's just more clear for what would be, so this is on page 70 of the agenda packet, should be. And that is falling under one use on a lot, and I know that there was concern about multiple dwellings being used for short-term rental on one lot. And this, as I said, should better ensure a written determination for each development going forward.
Kelly, do you have some comments?
I was just thinking about Councilmember Hosley's statements. I'm not sure I'm following her logic. It would help me if she could better explain how this relates to the short-term rental regulations. I'm concerned that this particular change would be something that might need to go back to Planning Commission. I would let Attorney Everly advise us in that manner, but I'm not entirely sure I follow the logic on this one.
Attorney Everly.
I agree with Kelly and recommend that no change be made here without this going through the Planning Commission process.
Okay. Any other discussion? We're ready for a, oh, George, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, we don't want to send anything back to Planning Commission. They sent to us exactly what they, what we asked for. Sending it back to them would be a slap in the face of the Planning Commission.
Agreed. We said we would never do that again. Okay, roll call.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reiser?
No.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last one is for amendment under Section 24, Amendment to the South Haven Zoning Ordinance, Section 2305 of Article 23, inserting Section 2 after Section 1 to read, "A short-term rental, the zoning use of a parcel on which a lawful nonconforming short-term rental exists may continue unless and until the short-term rental registration or license lapses for a period of a year or more, or is revoked pursuant to Section 10-245 of the City Code or pursuant to Article 5 of Chapter 14, respectively." Do I have support for discussion?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So again, this was in version B, was before the Planning Commission. This is taken based on the version that Cliff Bloom had brought to us in November, and for many reasons, that was not pursued. But this mimics also the 2130, Section 2, that is in our current zoning ordinance. And, you know, Cliff Bloom, the senior partner, thought it was fine. And this is one way that if, it really only comes into play when people do not follow the rules and have revocation, so that a revocation is really a revocation and not a suspension. And just reinforces that if you have the use, you need to diligently protect it by not allowing the license to lapse for a period of a year or more, or registration. So this is how we would better meet our goal number one of decreasing short-term rentals in our residential districts. That was one of the goals of the working group. I continually questioned how we would meet that where there is not a definitive way that had been incorporated to meet that. And again, this only comes into play when we don't have properly operated short-term rentals, so it's on the shoulders of the short-term rental owner to ensure that they comply. And again, it was based on actually, language from Cliff Bloom in our November version. And that is why I continue to advocate for its inclusion.
Attorney Everly.
Thank you, Mayor. Similar language was discussed by Cliff, and Cliff did express concerns regarding the proposed language specifically to my recollection regarding the term lapse. This amendment gets at an issue that was discussed at length, both in the work group and at the Planning Commission, and I believe also before this body regarding the concept of abandonment. Abandonment requires an action as well as intent. I do not believe the proposed language takes into account the element of intent, which regardless of whether, what we put in our zoning ordinance, we would be required to prove in court if the city were to take the position that a use had been abandoned. So again, this is council's ordinance, this is council's prerogative, but I, if council were to move forward with this language, it would have to be with the understanding that it does not address an element of intent, that we would be required to prove anyway. And my caution to that is, down the road, people looking at this ordinance may not have heard this conversation, and they may be confused as to why, when the zoning ordinance says this, the city is not pursuing a position of abandonment. And that, the answer to that would be because, although we don't say it in our zoning ordinance, there's another element, if you will, that we would have to prove. So I, again, it's council's ordinance, council's welcome to do whatever it wants, but that's my concern, is that it may be causing more questions than it answers. Additionally, abandonment is already addressed in the zoning ordinance for every other use, so that the rule is established in the zoning ordinance and at state law, and then we just apply it to the facts as they exist. I don't see this change being helpful in doing this. But again, it's council's prerogative.
Any other questions? George.
So, this, even though this was supposedly in version B at the Planning Commission, I would feel this would need to go back to Planning Commission if it was adopted. This is such a departure from what Planning Commission actually sent to us, I don't see we could adopt this and not send it back to Planning Commission. In addition, this is a change to Section 2305, which is improvements to nonconforming sites. This additional language has nothing to do with improvements to nonconforming sites. This is the wrong place to put this, if we want to put it in at all. I don't think we should do this. This is, again, we're trying to do stuff to the zoning ordinance, and we're trying to make these changes on the fly, and we're gonna end up with something worse than what we have right now.
Thank you. Joe? Did you have a question?
No, I think George addressed some of the things that were on my mind.
Thank you. Mary.
So I had provided this request to legal counsel pursuant to the directive of the Planning Commission Chair at the March Planning Commission meeting, and it's legal counsel who inserted it in this location. It was not me who inserted it, it's in version B. So if there's a concern with the section it went in, that concern should be raised to the city attorney, not me. I simply provided a list of items that I wanted incorporated. If this had really been discussed as much as it's alleged to have been discussed, and I'm quite perplexed how Attorney Everly could say at the last city council meeting that he's not aware of what I'm referring to, and I had to cite to the language and the current zoning ordinance to do this. At Planning Commission, yes, we did discuss laps, we discussed other things with Cliff Bloom, but the specific language that he incorporated, which was the basis of this, was not really discussed. And so to infer that it was discussed extensively is not really accurate. So that is why I continue to ask for this to be added. If Attorney Everly believes it should now go under a different section in light of Councilman Sleeper's comments, I'm open to suggestion, but I have suggested the amendment based on the draft version B that came back to me after I provided bullet points for the attorney to incorporate into a draft ordinance.
Well, one more thing. So this wording is just like the wording we talked about at our last city council meeting, that we as a group decided not to adopt. So why are we trying to do it now, again, when we already talked about it the last meeting and we decided not to adopt it?
Because at the end of the meeting, Councilman Sleeper, Councilman Reiser inquired about the three ways for a short-term rental to go away. And the second item he listed was violation of the rules. Well, without this, there is no way for the revocation of a license or registration for a violation of the rules. This is where that occurs. And so for that to be one of the three items, this is required, unless you have a different opinion.
I do. A couple of things. One, we keep talking about what was discussed by council when Cliff was here. I will note that at the council meeting, I believe at the council meeting when the council decided to form the work group, but I know at the very first meeting of the work group, we made the point that what had been said, we're not gonna relit, we're not gonna discuss, we're not gonna argue about what council's position on what was, we're gonna start with a clean slate. And we wrote up all the crazy ideas, ones that had been proposed and voted yes, ones that had proposed and voted no, ones that had never been mentioned, and we did that because we wanted, as a group, to move forward and put a product together for council. If we consistently looked back and argued, well, council had already voted on this, we would have gotten nowhere, because we recognized that this was going to be a new piece of legislation. So to consistently refer back to what had previously been done is not only unhelpful, but it inaccurately reflects the work of the work group. Secondly, regarding version B that went to the Planning Commission, yes, the chair said, you know, I believe the words were something along the lines of, you know, do, give Mary whatever she wants. But the motion at Planning Commission was specific to what was in version A. And again, that's what the Planning Commission asked for. As a courtesy to Councilmember Hosley, staff tried to put together her comments and another draft that could go before Planning Commission to, on behalf of Councilmember Hosley, try to facilitate some discussion. That, those comments, or version B was the result of an email that Councilmember Hosley sent to staff specifically asking that Section 24 amending Section 2501 to insert a new paragraph to ensure the retention of current zoning ordinance, Section 210. So basically, to say that I inserted it in this section is inaccurate. Yeah, I put it in there at the request of Councilmember Hosley. And again, staff was just trying to compile Councilmember Hosley's request. We didn't spend a lot of time reviewing it or modifying it. The goal was just to, as a courtesy, to get it in front of Planning Commission, and that is exactly what we did. Thirdly, this is the issue of abandonment that was discussed arguably ad nauseam. And again, council, you're the boss. You do what you want to do. But the only point I'm trying to make is that there is a standard for abandonment, a legal standard, and this language does not accurately reflect that. As Councilmember Hosley just noted, the intent here is to say if somebody, for whatever rea, if their permit is revoked, and there's, the licensing ordinance has a one-year cooling off period, her position is that under the zoning ordinance, you should have abandoned that use. And I think that really, that example that she provided really highlights my concerns. Simply because someone's permit was revoked, and they're precluded from getting a license again for a year because of the cooling off period, doesn't necessarily mean they intend to abandon that use. They're prohibited from continuing with that use. Where is the evidence of their intent? Now, you could have a situation where somebody loses their license, and in that cooling off period, they change the use because they don't want to just let it sit there. That would be strong evidence of abandonment, you've changed the use. But they also could have their permit revoked and leave a sign up there that says STR and put another sign that says STR coming 2027. That clearly, in my mind, evidences their intent not to abandon the use, but this language doesn't account for that, and that's my concern.
Thank you. Let's have a roll call.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
So are you saying that if a license is revoked, it will always be able to be given back after a certain period of time?
Under the licensing ordinance, if it's revoked, you're ineligible for a license for a year, kind of a cooling off period. Hey, you messed up, you need to cool off and get it together and come back. I believe what some, specifically Councilmember Hosley, because she indicated so, she wants to link, and that, I think that's the purpose of this language, is to link, if your license is revoked under the licensing scheme, because you are not exercising that use per se for a year, you've abandoned it. And that's just not the case. There's factual considerations, as I just laid out. It may be abandonment in some case if there's additional facts, but there could be other facts that support the position that it wasn't abandoned.
But just to clarify what I meant, like if South Haven had the three strikes and you're out rule, if you got three, I don't know, dings, revocations, whatever, and we were like, we don't want you renting anymore, is that legally allowed? And if so, do we need that language in here to support that?
If the goal were to be moved towards a three strikes, you're out, that would be a significant departure from what the city has recently adopted. There would be issues with that that I would want to discuss with council if that was a direction council wanted to go, but it's definitely, if that's a conversation council wants to have, we'd obviously be happy to provide some input on that.
I mean, I just thought we were doing that, so I guess I don't really understand.
I don't think this is a three strikes, you're out rule. This is if your license is revoked, and you're not a short-term rental for the period of a year, you were declaring that you've now, you've lost your zoning right. And we're saying this in the zoning ordinance, I believe what you're talking about would be some sort of licensing scheme where three strikes, you're out, you're not able to get another license.
Right.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you talking about maybe if they did it three times, this happened three times, and they would lose it?
That's kind of what I was wondering.
Yeah, because how many times can they actually have their license revoked? Is there a limit?
I don't believe there's a limit in there currently.
So they can just keep doing it over and over?
After the cooling off period.
So.
Mary, you used your 10 minutes.
No, I have not.
I kept track.
Personal point, then I move to waive Robert's rules of order, because I have not talked on my issues, and if you consistently enforce that, you are silencing the residents, because I'm advocating for them. And what is happening here is a misrepresentation of what the current licensing regulatory code has, and that needs to be clarified. And much of my discussion has been addressing other people. And much of my discussion has been addressing other people's issues, which does not count towards the 10 minutes of Robert's Rules.
It does.
No, it does not.
Okay, we're ready for a roll call.
No. I move to waive Robert's Rules of Order to allow this discussion to continue to clarify this licensing issue. Do I have support?
I'll support.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? No?
No.
Yes, carries. So current.
I don't know if everyone voted.
Current regulatory ordinance 10-245, violations, revocation, and registration, which is specifically referenced in this part and is specifically referenced in what I had provided to legal counsel. And under B, revocation of registration, offenses warranting revocation, the city may revoke the rental registration for any dwelling unit which is the site of at least three separate incidents occurring on three separate days within a calendar year resulting in a plea of responsibility with or without an explanation, et cetera. So I believe that there, that is the problem, that you, and I raise that as an issue, that a suspension is not a revocation. A suspension for a one-year allows it to go, and they can be repeat offenders. They can get suspended however many times.
I think you're conflating, or a misunderstanding, suspension versus revocation in that a license is issued for the period of a year. And if you lose that license after, and to clarify Councilmember Onuki's point, I interpret, what I heard you saying is like three strikes, you're out, you can never get a license. What is in the ordinance is if there's three violations, your license can be revoked. There's a difference there. But again, a license, there's a finite term to it. So if it is revoked, that means you don't have that license anymore. You can come back for another license. A suspension of a license would look more like you can't operate for, like we have a year, you have an annual license and say you can't operate for two weeks within that licensing period. You're suspended from operating. But again, you have to look at that license as it has a beginning and it has an end. It's not a, it doesn't keep going. It's a new license every time. And that license, that license is in fact revoked. You have to, and then there's a cooling-off period for a year, then you can come back for another license.
We are ready to vote. Let's have a roll call.
Did that answer your question, Wendy?
Somewhat.
Okay.
Okay. Do we know what we're voting for?
The last amendment.
Okay, perfect, just checking. Okay, Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. Can we, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can we go back to the short-term rental lawful non-conforming definition? Because I know we voted no on this current definition.
So it's, remains as it is.
But I would like to make a motion to include the definition provided by the city attorney.
Support.
Any discussion?
Legal counsel advised against it. I'm voting no.
Okay.
Again, this is wording that has not gone through Planning Commission. We've already added too much to this. This is going to go half the back to Planning Commission now, and we're starting all over again.
And we don't want that. Right. Roll call, please.
Okay. Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
No.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
No.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Moving on to number 10. The city council will be asked.
No.
No.
We need to adopt.
Oh, the whole thing?
The whole thing. We need to adopt the whole thing.
Can we adopt it without sending it back to Planning Commission? I don't think we can.
The only change, if I, what were the changes that were made? We did not add a definition for short-term rental lawful non-conforming, correct?
We did add that.
We did?
We did add that.
We did? Okay. And then we did not, we changed, the council changed the special land use standards, correct?
We did.
There was no change to Article 21, or Section 2103, item number four, the development that forms a cohesive development, correct?
That one did not change, yes.
And then there was the addition of the issue, the issues that pertain to abandonment, correct?
Yes, Section 2305.
Okay.
So now we're voting on the whole kit and caboodle?
Correct. And I think Georgia's point is well taken. I do believe that because those changes or something similar to them was presented in version B that went through the Planning Commission, I don't think you're necessarily required to send it back to planning. But again, if council wants to send it back to planning, that's always an option to get additional feedback on those issues.
Okay, so we're voting on number nine with the changes that city council agreed upon. Roll call, please.
There were a couple of questions on the overlay district. Should those be addressed now before we vote on it?
It would be. I also, I think we noted in the staff report that we changed the short-term rental multiple family and a dwelling structure. I think we tried to clean that up, correct, Dave?
That would, we did not make the change to the ordinance. That was a suggested change for council. So if council's inclined to make that change, that they would need to go through the amendment process for that.
But we did also receive a couple of folks who were interested in being part of the STR overlay zone. We have some houses on Park Street, I think Central Lofts. I'm trying to think who else. Kelly, do you remember?
The condominiums on Black River.
Can we, does that have to be part of our vote tonight?
It would be part of the overlay, or, I mean, it's the overlay map that would be changing.
And if the map is changing, that would need to go back to Planning Commission, absolutely.
So I think some is just clarification. So I don't believe that there was any motion in front of the zoning, Planning Commission to add Bailey Point PUD. I think there maybe was confusion that it was part of the overlay district because it's in the PUD district, which is immediately above it in the zoning ordinance. I think the map is a little unclear, so for 220 Park Street, I'm thinking that's outside of the overlay district, but 271 Black River, I think the Harbor Side condos are in the overlay district. So what we could do, and the Central Lofts, so they were four, so we could adopt the ordinance as is with the recommendation that Planning Commission consider amendments to the overlay district? Is that what would be recommended?
I think it's well within the city council's purview to do that, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion for the ordinance.
Well, the one staff amendment, what, oh, my mouse is going crazy. What page is that on?
I believe at page 40 of 146. And if someone were inclined to make the motion, I think the motion could read, "Move to amend Section 2203.06 as indicated in the staff report."
Yeah, I would move to amend Section 2206.06 of the zoning ordinance to strike structure and insert building as provided in the staff report.
I believe that was part of my original motion.
It was.
It was.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, it's just someone said it wasn't, so.
Okay. Are we ready to vote, or do we need anything else?
So I'm confused. We started talking about whether this is going back to Planning Commission. Did we decide that? We got sidetracked, it seems like, on talking about something else, or are we saying it doesn't need to go back to Planning Commission?
That's what I thought Dave had said.
I am comfortable, given the history of Planning Commission, particularly in regards to the public hearing on version B, which contained a lot of these suggestions that ultimately were not recommended, but I believe, although there have been modifications, I believe were within the goalposts, as it were.
If we were to modify the map, however, they would have to send it back.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay.
So if we were to get this done tonight, maybe we just call for a vote.
Okay. Let's, are we ready to vote?
Sure.
Okay.
Roll call?
Megan.
Ready. Reeser?
This is not going back to planning, what I'm voting on.
Thank you.
Correct. We're voting to adopt with the amendments.
Good job.
Yes. Okay. Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Number 10, the city council will be asked to appoint Bloom Sluggett to perform prosecution services for the city of South Haven. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned in the staff report, we had two original submissions. One of the original applicants has withdrawn. They have, when I followed up with them, they had mentioned that they had recently purchased a law firm up north, and because of that, they were not going to be able to give us the level of service that they described in their proposals, so they were withdrawing. So at this point, Bloom Sluggett is the only firm that's interested.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Bloom Sluggett to perform prosecuting services for the city of South Haven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Go ahead.
I am disappointed that we are down to just one firm. I had indicated at the previous time that we took a vote that I think variety helps. I do like to have different sets of eyes on regular city council matters and prosecution. And I would, at this point, I would prefer to open the bids up or possibly contact Balcom to see if things had changed, if they had hired another attorney such that they could withdraw their withdrawal. At this time, I'm not supportive of having the same law firm handle both matters.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Okay. I would just like to state real quickly that having, this is what I practiced law was. I was a criminal defense attorney, and when I practiced, I didn't jump across the aisle. I feel very strongly in that. We've had a number of people, firms that might be interested, but they want to do both prosecution and defense in the same county. I'm not comfortable with that. I think if you're going to choose a path, then choose the path. I understand there are some concerns with Bloom Sluggett, but I got to be honest with you. I think that they really put a lot of effort into coming down here and to know us. Yes, we've had a story to history, short-term rentals. Happily, we put that to bed, and that was with a lot of effort. And it's not going to be perfect. That's part of why we go through this legislative process. So I would suggest that we get this done. I know our attorney, Mark Manning, who's been doing such a wonderful job for us, is looking to head on out, and we've, I've introduced and explained that if we need to have some overlapping, I think there's a willingness there.
And Mark Manning has spoken highly about Bloom Sluggett?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
No.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, the city council will be asked to consider approval of Resolution 2025-16, a resolution to set a public hearing date for the fiscal year 2025-26 budget to be held on May 19, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Kate?
That's correct. We are setting our budget hearing, so that we, our next date, we will have staff here. We'll get those printouts for Mary and share that with the entire council.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 2025-16, a resolution to set a public hearing date for fiscal year 2025-26, budget to be held on May 19, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor say yes? Opposed? The motion passes. Next, oh, is there an 11A?
Yes.
Okay.
So Kate, by your statement, does that mean that you will be providing that information?
Yep, I'm providing those 70-plus pages to you all for your thorough review.
So it appears A is complete.
Thank you. The city council will be asked to consider approval of the following special event applications. Special Event 2025-25, Juneteenth, 2025, to be held on Saturday. Is it supposed to be June 21st?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, it is.
2025 from 2:00 to 10:00 PM at Elkenberg Park. B, Special Event 2025-26, Fourth of July Parade, to be held on Friday, July 4th, at 11:00 AM, to begin and end at Elsie Moore High School. And C, Special Event 2025-27, Blueberry Festival, 2025, to be held August 7th through August 10th, 2025, at various locations throughout the downtown. Is there a motion to approve those?
I move to approve Special Event 2025-25, Juneteenth, 2025, as read by the mayor. Special Event 2025-26, Fourth of July Parade, as read by the mayor. And finally, Special Event 2025-27, Blueberry Festival, 2025, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The events are approved. Thank you. Next, the city council is asked to consider approval of an amendment to the skate park lease agreement with Van Buren County. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. City staff were approached by the Marine Division. They currently use two docks that are just adjacent to where we used to have a lift station on Dunkley. And in consideration for that, we have been using the land adjacent to Seventh District West Courthouse for our skate park. We recently just renovated our skate park, and this is an opportunity that came up. We are looking to extend the lease between the two entities. They are looking to have a satellite office, a 12-by-16 shed that will have some power. There's already power at the docks. They have 30 amp. power there. But this is a temporary shed that they would be using as a satellite office. Should the water rise, come back, so should the water come back up, we would have them move it so that it doesn't get damaged. But I actually see the water's kind of trending a little bit lower. This, it's not coming back quite so high. So that's what we have here, is just a temporary shed for the Marine Patrol to use and write reports and store the radios and things like that.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to support the approval of the amendment to the skate park lease agreement provided, for a very, I'm sorry, agreement with Van Buren County.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to note that we were provided with an updated agreement with Exhibit C attached. It had not been identified in the agenda packet, in case anybody was wondering, and thank you for that.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Any other discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. Does anyone need a break yet, or should we keep going?
I think that'd be appropriate, a break.
Take a break? Okay. We'll take about a five-minute recess. Okay. We'll take about a five-minute recess. [Music] And we're back in session. We are at number 14. The city council will be asked to consider a request from Mr. Wayne Pacina to remove his property at 09160 M140, back to the South Haven Charter Township. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request, um, so the city, uh, along with the township, worked on a 425 agreement for a period of 10 years to, to pull in, to pull in to the city certain parcels along, uh, Leg, um, along M140, which is an interest, entry place, entryway to the city. Uh, we were looking at that area as doing one of two things. One, to utilize our tools to facilitate the cleanup of those areas with, or using our code enforcement. And then, two, creating a commercial rehab district to, um, engender and, and support the redevelopment of a lot of those lots there. So we've pulled in a number of the parcels there, um, as part of that. Mr. Pacina is asking to withdraw his, with, remove his parcel and go back to the township. Um, he was in the middle of building, uh, storage facilities, and under the city's new zoning, when it was brought in, it was not compatible with his, the use that he had started. So for this action to occur, for removal, this body has to say yes, and so does the township.
And so, um, and you're, if you read the packet, the city staff is, um, not recommending this.
We're not recommending it, but we do see that there's, you know, Mr. Pacina is making a, you know, good case for the use of his property. I think if this body doesn't want to, um, if this body wants to vote for it, that's fine. Um, we did make a, a staff recommendation based on how we saw the tools working out there, but it's ultimately up to this body and then, of course, the township board. Both, both bodies have to say yes.
And just, just to clarify, Mayor, if council was inclined to say yes, saying yes at this stage is holding a public hearing. It's not a definitive yes yet, because we have to go through the process.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
Um, let me see. I would move to, allow Mr. Wayne Pacina to remove his property at 09160 M, M140, back to the South Haven Charter Township.
To set a public hearing on the, on the issue.
For it, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Um, let's have a roll call.
Of course. Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, number 16. The city council will, oh, I'm sorry. Are we at 15A?
I think it's just 15, um, yeah. For discussion of lifeguards.
The discussion about lifeguards?
Yes.
Okay. 15A. The city council will be asked to consider, A, directing the city manager to provide the draft lifeguard program developed by staff based on the report from Chris Brewster of the United States Life Saving Association, no later than 5:00 PM on May 7th, 2025.
So. So Kate, it sounds like, um, from your email, I thought there was more there. But for the draft program that you referenced based on the USLA, what does, is that just the Excel?
It's just an Excel spreadsheet where we've been tracking what we think we need for the program and, and approximate costs. Um, and so that's what we've been trying, we've been tracking. There were, there have been some internal conversations. Um, but, um, we were not, we also had a question about the revenue. So that's what has kind of forestalled us right now. So I have that, and I can share that out to council.
Yeah, it's just, because the, the motion, um, from April 7th was to provide itemized list of costs for lifeguard staffing that was proposed in the USLA report for North and South Beach, and based on estimated equipment, including an AED on each beach rather than each tower. So it really was only looking at expenses.
Yep.
Um, so actually, that's A and B together. So, yes, if you can provide that, that would be very helpful. Um, and you thought that that wouldn't be a problem, providing the communication between city and, and Chris Brewster? I just think it helps to have his comments while we're looking at it.
Yep, we can provide those.
So I would make a motion that the city council direct the city manager to provide the itemized cost for the draft program, including correspondence between the city and Chris Brewster, um, by 5:00 PM on May 7th, 2025.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's do it.
Go ahead. Um, yeah, I, I'm trying to gather my thoughts, but I feel like we just keep getting farther behind in being able to vote on this and potentially bring it. And I believe since last year, we've gone through all of the various steps that we were told to go through, um, budgeting for it in the last, the current budget year. Making it a priority, it's now a priority again. But it's already May, and we still haven't had all the information in front of us to be able to vote on it. It's just really disappointing and frustrating to not be able to move forward one way or another. So I hope that we have all of the information that we need provided to us by this time so that we can finally vote for it, vote on it at the next council meeting.
Any other discussion? Joe?
Yeah, my only comment is it would be great to have the expenses, but we need some kind of a projection. And I know we're in a difficult situation with that. But we do at some point need the projections on revenue. Because only without, with revenue, without revenue, we can't make a, an assessment of the feasibility financially to do this.
Right. Any other, just, go ahead.
I, I guess I don't fully understand that, and I'm not a huge numbers person, but we had it in the budget for last year, so of course, I don't know entirely where that comes from. But if it's a line item budget, it seems like we would be able to say it's coming from somewhere, that we will have the money to support that. We had $700,000 budgeted for it this current fiscal year. So I don't want to get to our next meeting and then have, where are we getting the money from, be a reason to push it into June. That worries me.
And that's why having the budget information ahead of time, we can look at what was provided last year from our March meeting discussion. We can look at the information provided by USLA. And we can do our independent looking online at different things. So that, and, and I think the correspondence from Chris would be helpful. That's why I just, I expected this information today. Um, and I just don't want to delay, like Wendy was saying, to have it at our fingertips.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Is there a question on, I know that currently, we, we are, we assess beach parking fees, um, either through a daily, a weekly, or an annual, three-year annual permit. Um, is there another question? Does this council want us to look at a millage as well?
Look at a what?
A millage.
A millage? Actually, I've talked to people who, um, would support putting this on the ballot and asking our voters to decide. And so they can vote on a millage that shows exactly what it will cost. And then our voters, many of whom are not speaking at city council meetings, can vote and decide. That's what I'm hearing.
And what I'm hearing is finding a way to do it without our tax dollars. So, um, I think once we see the expenses and have some other questions answered, I think we would then be able to advise on ways that might be feasible for funding.
I think any way we do it, we're using tax dollars. Okay. We are voting on 15B.
Well, actually, it's 15A through C that got combined into one. So it's the, because from Kate's commentary, it became clear that the lifeguard program that was referenced actually is an itemized cost of what would go where. So, um...
Was there a motion for A through D?
So, no. So the motion was taking the words from A, B, and C and combining them into one. The motion, if I have it correctly, was directing the city manager to provide the draft lifeguard program through the itemized estimated cost by 5:00 PM on May 7th, 2025, including...
Okay, you're changed, so that language is changed.
But it, it's the, it's the same purpose. Um, did you?
I have the language, if you'd like.
Perfect.
It's to direct the city manager to provide itemized costs for the draft program, including communications between the city and Chris Brewster by 5:00 PM on May 7th, 2025.
And then B, directing the city manager to provide an itemized estimate cost, or is that combined?
Yeah, that was the full motion, what I just read.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then directing the city manager to provide no later than 5:00 PM on May 7th, the communications between the city and Chris Brewster of USLA regarding expenses?
That's part of the original motion.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, was there a second?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Let's have a roll call.
You got it. Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And then Wendy, um, that, for the determinium next steps, based on what you had said, would you want an agenda, a separate agenda item on the next city council, um, meeting to have a discussion on, um, the, the material?
Wendy, you can call Kate and get that on the agenda. Okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. We are now on 16. The city council will be asked to receive an update from Public Works Director Dana Byrd.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. Um, we've got a lot of activities going on at Public Works, as I'm sure you've seen around town. There's been a lot of seasonal staff out doing plantings, landscaping. Uh, we have several projects under construction right now. Um, so it's getting to be our prep-for-busy-season time of year. Uh, we spent the past several months working on budgeting, capital improvement planning, that has also gone through the Board of Public Utilities, as well as Shasa. Um, I won't spend a lot of time on specific projects, because I know we just had our capital improvement workshop and our budget workshop with council to go through a lot of that in detail. Uh, but I just wanted to highlight a few things that have been happening around town. Um, the ice rink is obviously taken down now, and the electrical work on the pavilion has been coordinated with the DDA. Our parks and street staff have been working together to prepare town for spring and summer. Uh, I'm getting to know a lot of our seasonal park staff and our bridge tenders, who've all been hired and have been out there working. Um, our beach preparations continue for mid-May. Um, you know, we got the snow fence down, the beach is all leveled. Uh, the tractor and the beach cleaner are out there up and running. Um, and we're working on onboarding all of our seasonal enforcement staff. Uh, I learned today that the shed for the track chair donation has been placed out there, and so that's out there, um, and getting set up for use. And so that's out there and getting set up for use for our facilities. We had our insurance appraisals come through to all our city facilities as part of our insurance process for renewal for the year. And SHASA recently held a public hearing on the possible wastewater expansion to Covert Township. So those are just some of the highlights of activities happening around town. Specific projects that are going on, we have the Aleworth Non-Mortarized Path. So that was just recently completed over on Aleworth, connecting the Van Buren Trail. So that's open and people should go check that out. There are a few punch list items and cleanup that we still have to do there, but the path is open. And William Street Parking Lot, if you've been by there, that got totally reconstructed. That was a project we did in combination with the DDA. And appreciate everyone's patience and coordination with that because there's a lot of residents and businesses over in that area that have been inconvenienced. But we appreciate everybody's patience as we look to getting that paved, hopefully this week. We've been doing a lot of work out in the city hall parking lot, as you may have noticed, and we're going to some other areas, other parking lots around town to do concrete and asphalt work. And some of the bathrooms at Bailey Street Tala, here on Street in Elkenberg Park, just got their floors resurfaced, which was an item that, that was approved. So appreciate your support in us making those improvements around town. We have some various other things going on. Frontier Communications is installing fiber around town. And Surf Internet is expected to be in work, again, in the community around the MDOT right-of-ways and the river crossing. And an exciting thing to share with the community is the SHASA board, at their last regular meeting, approved the new logo to go on the elevated tank that we're building at Public Works. So it's very exciting to share that with the community. The board reviewed several alternatives and this was the one that was selected. So we're looking forward to the steel crews beginning to build the tank. And it'll all be built and painted on the ground. And so the, it's the least expensive you can ever paint a tank is when it's still on the ground because if you paint it in the future, it's up in the air, you have to do it elevated. So, so yeah, that is an exciting news we had to share. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead. I see on here that the pedestrian bridge on Hubbard is going to be redected or whatever. How long will it be closed and do you have the dates for that?
I will have to get that information. We just started buying the materials for that with our street department. And so I'll have to see when that's scheduled. I can get some information out to the community on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mary?
No question, but thank you. Was glad to see the crosswalk signs out with the nicer weather. It really helps calm traffic, especially along North Shore Drive. Just reiterate the thanks to Erin Prebe for helping with the rotary piece pole. And also thank you for responding to the resident with the driveway and paving water runoff issue. And I look forward to a resolution on that matter.
Sure.
One of my neighbors wanted me to ask you, the lead pipes are going to be replaced with plastic?
So we're using two different materials. If it's in the road right-of-way, it's replaced with copper. And then on the private side, so where it would, in the future, it'll be the property owner's responsibility, it's a PEX material. And that was an economic decision because we have to replace so many of these lines that we can get a lot more done if we transition from copper to PEX on the private side. There's less risk of something happening on the private side to a plastic line and more risk in the road right-of-way where we like to use copper, it's a preferred material.
Okay, and we had our pipes checked, so that went really well. What about neighbors who are, they're, they've been gone and now they're home for the summer? Or they're a second homeowner who are, they're here now? How do, who do they contact to have their pipes checked?
Yeah, anyone who's wondering can contact the Department of Public Works, just at our general number. And we'll, we'll follow up and do some outreach. But when we work with the contractor, their, their intent is to just kind of move block by block and try and get ahold of people as they go. We've been trying to provide them some information so they can do more outreach and contacts. But if somebody thinks, oh, they just went by my area and wasn't around, you know, feel free to flag them down or call Department of Public Works and we'll try and coordinate, getting, getting a contact to the contractor.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much, we appreciate you.
All right, thanks.
Next, it is now time for public comment. Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda and you have up to five minutes.
Good evening, thank you. Good evening, I am here to talk about the hiring process for the chief of police that was recently done.
Your name and address?
Sean Only, 278 Blue Star Highway.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My first comment is, I told you so. I came before you in March and told you that this was not a good choice. And you confirmed that choice anyway and it made the city look real bad. Next I say to you, silence in the face of injustice is complicity. When hiring processes are manipulated behind closed doors and unqualified candidates are chosen in leadership positions, we all lose. As a parent, in numerous media outlets, we have lost public trust. We for sure lose the opportunity to build a workforce based on merit, skill, and dedication. And most tragically, we lose the confidence of hard-working individuals who believe that if they work hard, play by the rules, and serve their community with honor, they will be given a fair chance. It is a matter of integrity. We cannot ask our residents to have faith in this city's leadership whilst the city manager is allowed to refuse to honor her established hiring process for the chief that she used two times. And thankfully, the remaining candidate, Sergeant Carlato, is the last candidate in her process. Sergeant Carlato brought years of relevant experience, strong recommendations, a personnel file filled to the brim with awards and accolades, and a deep commitment to serving this community. And yet, he was passed over, not because he lacked skills or failed at the interview, but because the city manager said personal reasons. That is not just unprofessional, it is unethical. Public service jobs are not private property. They are not to be filled based on favoritism or personal comfort. They must be filled with integrity, transparency, and a commitment to hiring the best person for the job, regardless of personal relationships. The lack of ethics and integrity demands accountability. You, city council, have an obligation and you have authority to do an independent investigation into this specific hiring decision. If we claim to support fairness, we cannot turn a blind eye when those in power violate that very principle. We owe it to our city employees, our applicants, and our residents to demand better. This is not about politics, it's about principle, and it is time for accountability. And I ask the people who've come to support Sergeant Carlato, that we've sat through this very long meeting, to at least come up and voice your concerns because I hope you've heard what we've, we're about to say. Because it is really important for the chief of police to be a recommended person in this community. Thank you.
Counsel, Mayor, I am kind of in a dark about these meetings.
Oh, excuse me, if to give your name and address.
My, my name is Larry Acera. I live at 1052068 Street, South Haven. I've lived here 75 years. I love this community, I love the people here. It's great and it's been growing bigger than I could ever imagine. I had highs and lows with law enforcement around here. When I come back from Vietnam, I was quite a handful. And I've gotten to know many of them. And I've gotten to know Pat Carlato. He's, he's one in a million. He's a member, he was in the armed forces, he's been in this community for 25 years. And I've got to know him very well. And he's a heck of a person. And I, I wish you would all take a look at his record and, and he needs to be supported. We've tried two times to elect a, a man for the job and both times they've failed. Now we've got an opportunity to make a wrong a right and put the right man into this position. And if you look at his record, you know he is the right man. So I hope you do the right thing. I don't have to come back and sit in them chairs anymore. Thank you very much.
Henry Compton, 331 71st Street in Casco Township. I know a lot of your names, I don't know, I've heard, heard them, you know, through my lifetime. I know Kate and I know, and I know Annie a little bit, you know, I mean, we're acquaintances. Retired from the city of South Haven, did 22 years, loved my job and I, I was great. It was, it was a great time for me. We've heard the word local all night long tonight and from everybody. And by the way, you're earning your money tonight. You are earning your money. Shop local, that's my, that's my thing. We got a local guy, shop local, keep it here. And not only shop local for the chief that we need right now, there's officers on that police force right now that could even be for the future. You won't have to look outside. And if you take some of the money that you spent on, on, on doing the search program and maybe, you know, get some technology that they needed back from the beginning, which I don't know anything about, but thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Antoine Bell, I live at 1242073rd Street, South Haven Township. I'm a retired police officer, retired from South Haven 26 and a half years. And I've worked under Pat Carlato for probably 15 years or so. And I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm here to speak about a recent hiring process for a chief of police, a process that, from where I and many others stand, was deeply flawed. And worse, it was unethical. Sergeant Carlato is someone who is widely respected, highly experienced, and deeply committed to this community. He was not chosen, unfortunately. Not because he was unqualified, not because he failed to meet the expectations, but because of personal grudge held by the city manager. Let's be, let's call it what it is, it's a misuse of authority. When personal feelings interfere with professional responsibility, especially in decisions as critical as appointing our chief police, chief of police, is not a bad, it is not just a bad leadership, it is a betrayal of public trust. We cannot have a city where most important leaders, leadership roles are decided behind closed doors based on personality conflicts rather than performance in public service. Our police chief isn't just a department head. They set the tone for justice, safety, and accountability in our city. And that role must be filled through a process that is transparent, fair, and free from personal agendas. I am respectfully calling on this council to open an independent investigation into the hiring process for the chief of police, specifically into the city manager's role and how personal bias influenced the outcome. We deserve answers. The community deserves transparency. And the candidate, candidates who applied, especially those who weren't, who were overlooked for, or wrongly, for wrong reasons deserve justice. This belong, this city belongs to its people, not to politics or personal preferences of any one person. If you don't address this issue, you are setting a dangerous precedent. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Hood, 55057 16th Avenue. Being a teacher in town here, I thought it would be best I start out with a quote from Margaret Thatcher. "You may have a fight, or to fight a battle, more than once in order to win it." The battle that I stand here for today was not fought once, or even twice, but three times. Three times, an extraordinary man took on a fight that he should have very easily won. This extraordinary man who I reference is our own Sergeant Pat Carlato. And the fight, his fight, his fight has been for our beautiful city and the citizens who live here. A few months ago, you started a search. You hired a non-biased company. The company narrowed the search down to three candidates. Sergeant Carlato came well-prepared, the other two candidates, not so much. Majority of the citizens in the panel, council members, and even our mayor, recommended Sergeant Carlato for the job. This should have been an open and shut case, but it wasn't. Flash forward to today and our beautiful city has now been horribly embarrassed, not once, but twice. Personal matters do not belong in business. Business isn't personal. Unfortunately, our city manager's personal matters have gotten in the way. Now it is our business. I stand here to tell you that you are being lied to and made to look weak. Several people from the interview committee that I have spoken with have said they don't even understand why they were there. Nothing we said even mattered, it was all for show. You being our city leadership should be appalled by the disregard to yourselves and also the citizens who live here. You have a man with 25-plus years of service here in this community, a plethora of valor, lifesaving efforts, and merit. And when asked, 87.5% of the current SHPD wanted him as their next chief. But yet, we're allowing the personal issues of one to keep him from this. Enough is enough. The citizens of this community don't want another search. We don't want to waste another 20-plus thousand because we already have the man for the job. This country was founded by we the people. We the people are now speaking. This isn't personal, it's business. I would urge our mayor and council to demand a copy of the background packet on Honnold if you really want some truth. How about the communication between the background investigators and city hall? Find out how badly you all have been lied to. Sergeant Carlato was vetted by your non-biased company and recommended by the citizens, the council, and our mayor. Please understand that we put you here to work for us, to hear our voices. We are saying enough is enough. At this point, you, our city council and mayor, are our hope to have this fixed. Fix the embarrassment that our city has gone through. Our city manager reports to you. Do what's right and make the call to hire Sergeant Carlato. If you can't stand up and fight like you were voted in to do, then we the people know what we have to do. A fight is only as strong as the person willing to fight it. And if you aren't willing to be that person, we will find someone who is.
Excuse me, no clapping, please.
I'm going to be changing the subject here, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor Brown, council members, city staff. My name is Ethan Polka, I reside at 73100. I reside at seventy-three, one hundred, County Road three eighty-eight in the township. In addition to being a customer of the city's electric utility, my professional experience is working closely with the Michigan Public Service Commission and Department of Energy. This background informs my perspective of, on how the utilities are run here in the city, and I wish to discuss them tonight. This communication is to actually give you some ideas for improvement on your existing governing policies. Uh, South Haven's utility is a vital service for all its customers and existing policy providers. Some of the things that I personally have noticed is some key areas is Michigan Compiled Law four sixty ninety-Q requires that you provide ten-day notice. That is not in your city utilities program whatsoever. Uh, so that really needs to be something to be looked at. I have not brought this up to the Michigan Public Service Commission yet, but I am allowing you, as you appoint your board members, to these utilities to potentially look at it. The other thing is, is the Michigan Compiled Law four sixty ninety-Q dash four. It requires utilities to offer payment plans to customers who state they cannot pay their bill in full. City's current policy mentions accepting pledges from external agencies like the one day I worked for and has provisions, but you also need to have provisions on a budget plan after they have six months of good standing with electric utilities. Your plan does not have that, okay? Uh, another thing is vulnerable customer protections are not stated very clear in that, that Low Income Households Act of Military Personnel and Those When Medical Emergencies does not have a policy. It mentions that they will conform to it, but does not directly give what the benefits are. This is not good and this can go against your utility company and open up a potential lawsuit. Uh, reconnection flexibility, you offer none of that. Uh, your customer service, it's not very empathetic. Dealing with utility bills can be stressful, uh, so I believe that you should look at training customer service representatives with active listening situations, collaborative problem solving and better outcomes for both. So by providing customers with better information and by updating your policy, because it has not been updated since two thousand nineteen, June, I think you need to go over with the utilities board, which I will be addressing them also, uh, on potentially changing these. And I hope you take this into your consideration going forward when you're choosing your boards. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'll set my timer.
Thank you.
My name is Nicholas Latham. I reside at four twenty-six North Hamilton, outside of this county. Um, as you notice, I said outside of this county, however, I have deep roots in this area, specifically South Haven. I spent time growing up on Sixty-Eight Street, Sixty-Sixth Street, Mitchell Bros Trailer Park, Portico, Portico Trailer Park, on La Grange, on Bailey. I have a lot of history here and I look around the room and I see a lot of familiar faces as well. The reason why I decided to stand up here is to speak a little bit as to my brief interactions with Pat Carlotta, Sergeant Carlotta, if you will. For the past three years, it has been my responsibility as a law enforcement liaison of youth development company, A PAL, Police Athletic Activities League Chapter, to try and come up with programs that can help bridge the gap between youth and law enforcement and uniform officials to try to help increase the perception of uniform officials. I think it's no surprise if anybody turned on the news today, they'll see that, uh, there's not a very high, um, perception when it comes to the youth of uniform officials. And I like to think that there is hope for that to be reversed to any degree. It is not without its struggles to try to actively pursue agencies, uniform officials, military, fire, EMT, police, because these resources are stretched thin all across the board. It's no longer a cool thing to be in a uniform for a lot of eyes, minds even. And with that, I feel that there is a significant loss of a standardized role model, what that person could be capable of. It is to my pleasure to be able to say that I have been able to form, uh, ongoing relationship with a couple of agencies that have been able to participate in after-school and summertime youth programs. But I've always encountered, um, a little bit of a wall when it comes to trying to engage with city of, uh, South Haven's police department. Now, perhaps that was due to, you know, thin resources, perhaps that was, uh, just due to things going on behind the scenes that I didn't know about. I won't pretend to know anything about it, you know? I, I got seven different locations that I have to look after, so it's hard. But I do want to point out the one opportunity that South Haven Police had to make an impact on me and give me hope to continue to keep coming back and keep trying regardless of who holds that title of chief. And that was at the time interim chief Carlotta. I reached out to him during his time and just said, hey, would you at least come out, just meet some of the kids? We had a event going on that day. And I had a response in two days. I literally stood up from my desk and went, finally, when that happened. And we spoke briefly about some of the things that he thought would be interesting to see in the community. Um, recently I just completed a citizens academy with K D P S and, uh, Calmuzo County Sheriff's Department. And the idea of having citizens academies in South Haven came up and those ideas, while I mentioned them, he seemed to be on board with that and he seemed to be on board with the goals of trying to get cops and kids in the same environment again and trying to find ways to try to bridge that gap. And while I might have only had a couple of interactions with him, that's all it takes to keep that hope alive to me and in the bigger picture to countless other chapters. That hope to try to bridge that gap between youth and uniform officials needs to stay alive because I don't know if anybody here has ever been to a place where law and authority and order didn't exist, but.
Give one minute.
Check. We need law enforcement to have a relationship with our communities and that starts with our kids. So thank you for the two times I was able to have you. Thank you for being there, Pat Carlotta.
Any other comments?
Joe Wilkins, eight eleven Indiana Street. Mayor Brown and council members, it has been, has become painfully obvious to me and others who live or has lived in the Pleasant View Edition area on the south side of Ward One that the feelings of all, of residents apparently don't matter. On March sixth, Mr. Stegman's closing comments made in the defense of a young lady who reflected on the Pleasant View area as the zone was very offensive to many that grew up in that area. Since that meeting, the young lady involved has admitted that she didn't grow up in that area and she never meant it, meant to imply that. As part of his comments, Mr. Stegman stated, and I quote him, "You know this area as Pleasant View, but historically you would say, why were they referred to, that, why, why were they referred to by the four-letter word?" And I think coming out of the sixties was a drug culture and early seventies, Vietnam was just ending and there was all the factories there and Elkenberg Park became an area where all, where drugs were sold and it wasn't called Zone. It was called Drug Zone and it was shortened later to the Zone and that went from the seventies to the eighties, all the way into the nineties, unquote. The residents of the Pleasant View Edition want the chairman to know that his statement was absolutely incorrect. The name Zone was originated in the sixty as a term of endearment from a few people of color who lived in that area. Later, because of the stereotypes and labels attached to the name, a proclamation was requested stating that the area be recognized as the Pleasant View Edition area. Also, if the chairman was fully transparent in the eighties and nineties, drugs wasn't just a problem around the Elkenberg Park area, but it was a drug epidemic in our country. Mr. Stegman stated, and I quote, "I think it's important to know where historically and why certain things were named what they were," unquote. Mr. Stegman took upon himself to bring up several unfortunate incidents and he gave the names of Ron Wilson, Edwin Lamar Langston and a young lady by the last name of Sutton just to support his erroneous story of how the area around the Elkenberg Park got his name. He stated, and again, I quote him, "So yes, we want to call it Pleasant View, but sometimes the stigma remains and to this day, there's still problems in that area. We've had to have a police station there." Mr. Stegman should have known that a few unfortunate incidents does not give him the right to pass judgment on the whole area. Believe me, this type of judgment has not and will not be expressed by any board member as a result of killing in other areas of this city. I'll say it again, his position does not give him the right to take personal tax on residents, families or others who volunteer on boards. Mr. Stegman apparently believes that he's above apologies or making apologies, but let's be clear, his comments were insulting. He was demeaning and most of all, he was just outright wrong. Mayor Brown and council, these comments were offensive and on the behalf of the residents, I can, I can't believe that it's been weeks and we're yet to hear a word from our mayor, some of the board members and of course, the planning commissioner chairman concerning a request for an apology. Mayor Brown, as a leader, this issue should have been embraced as an opportunity to show that you care for all residents and to demonstrate your active leadership. Unfortunately, to some residents, your silence on this issue has been viewed as a lack of concern and it speaks louder than your presence in their community. Again, I ask that you and this council.
Give one minute.
I ask that you, with the support of this council, will insist that Mr. Stegman rewrite this wrong by simply saying, "I did not intend to offend anyone, but if that language, if that name, if that word offended any of the elderly or anyone that resided in that area, I'll apologize." Just as simple as that, but your lack of wanting to even address it is more damaging. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Olney, two, seven, eight Blue Star Highway. Um, I just want to come up to give my support for Sergeant Carlotta also. Um, I know some of the people in this room. Um, I spent twenty-eight years as a state trooper here in this area, um, lived in the area for about thirty years. Throughout my time in the state police, I've worked for multiple people, um, many post commanders, all the way up to people who ended up being in charge of the Michigan State Police. You're not going to find someone that's got more integrity or is better qualified for that position. So I just want to give him my support. I also don't think it's too much to ask if he's not given the position of why. I, I don't understand why he was passed over the other two times. I think he was the most qualified person for the position and I think he needs to be the one that's given that spot. So, thank you.
Good evening, Josh Goddison, five, five, four, six, zero, Thirty-second Avenue, Bangor, Michigan. Um, I, I don't know if this is okay to say, but we, the people, are not happy. We're pissed. We've watched this thing carry out with our police chief for the last however many months. We've watched games get played, we've watched money irresponsibly get spent and look at where we're still at. In my line of work, I served five years in the Marine Corps Infantry. Complacency kills. Stuff like this, this kind of position, it, it could get somebody killed and that's the reality of the situation. Not putting somebody that is qualified to be the police chief twice, the first time I kind of understand, but the second time is ridiculous. Got third try. That man sitting over there is the third try. Do the right thing. Step up. Thank you.
I know it's late, so I'll make it quick. Eric Cook, eight thirty-four Congress Street. Um, I was born and raised in South Haven. Uh, after I graduated from L C Moore, I joined the Coast Guard. I did twenty-two years specialized federal law enforcement, search and rescue. Uh, just recently moved back home to South Haven and boy, if things changed. So, uh, as you know, I, I work for the Sheriff's Department now. I do marine patrol specifically. Um, and my joke is, I'm fifty-one years old. I don't know what I want to be when I grow up, but in the short time, I, I worked just South Haven only and I could tell you just from my personal experience working with Sergeant Carlotta, I reached out to him, said, hey, we need help on something like this. He's always been there. Yes, yes, yes. So I've had absolutely nothing but great support from him, so I fully support him in your decision if you do hire him. Thank you.
Nancy Nam, one twenty-five Elkenberg. I wasn't going to get up to talk about this tonight, but the word micromanaging has been thrown around a lot at this council meeting and I'm not sure why that's been said, but I do think that some things need to be managed differently. And one of the things is accountability. And I really do believe that all of you should understand how this decision regarding the chief of police was made. People should be held accountable for how this decision was made. And if in, if you don't call some sort of investigation, nothing around here is going to change. If there's something going wrong in how the city is being run, it is up to you to, to come to terms with it and make a decision on how best the city should be run. If Kate isn't doing her job properly, if somebody isn't doing their job properly, it needs to be looked at and all of you need to do your job representing us and start looking into what has happened in this particular incident. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mike Redeki, five oh one La Grange Street. Was born and raised here. You all know me and you all are good people, good council. I just would like to know, I guess I don't want to know, but I wonder if you, you eight, listen to, um, all the people? I'm sure you do. I'm sure you're troubled. I wish there was an easy way out of this. Yeah, I support Pat Carlotta. Known Pat quite a while. He's a stand-up man. I don't, I don't know what he does in his private life. I don't know what you do in your private life. But I know I've, I've had my share of, you know, stupid things that I've done in the past and I've had the police have to, you know, come after me and, you know, make me stand up to be who I'm supposed to be. Something sounds bad here. I don't know what happened. I don't know how the, the, the process goes and trying to find out who you want for chief, but you had him there in January as one of the three. And, um, why did you put him there? If he was good back in January and he was enough to be on the ballot or looked at, wondering why, all of a sudden, number one guy, he fails. Number two guy fails. But Pat was there in January. Kind of seems like you would have just, you know, looked at his record. He has a great record, but I, I hope that you eight, take a look at this and you look into it, because something's not right. You know, something's wrong. And that's all. I give my support to Pat. Wonderful wife. My wife and I, we support Pat Carlotta.
Anybody else? If not, we're moving on to city manager's comments.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just a couple of things to update. We did get an email about stormwater runoff, so the city's engineering department will be looking into that. I do plan on bringing a second, um, I'm sorry, the Overton Agreement with Dwelling Place at our second meeting in here in May, so looking forward to that. Uh, city staffer also be working on an S T R F A C, um, because we know we've got a lot of people with questions out there. We're likely to bring a resolution that will have some prorated, um... We're likely to bring a resolution that will have some prorated fees, because knowing that we're about one year into like the transition period, so we're still working that out, that's some work to come. We did have some compliance over on 90 Avery, so the rails are down. We will address the stairway. It does appear that the fire pit appears to predate the ordinance, that we can tell from our, from our, from our searching. I also have an introduction for you all tonight, so I'd like to introduce to you the interim chief, Adam DeBoer. I think Adam's doing a fantastic job. His leadership has been stellar, and I'd like to introduce him to you tonight. So, Adam, come on up.
Thank you, Kate, council. Thank you for having me here tonight. I want to start by saying I'm deeply honored to be chosen to be the interim police chief for South Haven Police Department. I think it's best that you guys know a little about who I am. I've been married to my wife Lindsay for 21 years. We have two children, Emma, 21, Noah, 18, both of them attended or are currently attending Sagatuck High School. My family has been instrumental in my career. Without their support, none of this would have been possible. My time off is enjoyed with friends and family, usually on Lake Michigan or a golf course. My Christian faith drives my values and my principles, and my wife and I have tried to impress them on our children as well. I started with South Haven Police Department in October of 2004. For the past two decades, I have spent time working the road, in narcotics, and as the department detective. I promoted to sergeant in 2017, and really enjoyed my time as a leader in that position. I have enjoyed mentoring and working with members of my team. I've also learned that sometimes hard conversations need to be had, and sometimes I have to listen to others on ways that I can improve. In my 20 years with SHPD, I've had many people who have influenced me and turned me into the law enforcement professional I am today. Past chiefs like Rod Summerlot, Tom Martin, Natalie Thompson, the three chiefs I've had so far in my career, Sergeants Pat Carlotta, who has been a mentor to me, Tammy Rumler, Chris Mersman, Kyle Griffith, and also current police officers and recently retired police officers. Each of these people have poured into me and have influenced me in many ways. It is because of them that I stand here today. I look forward to leading the professional and proud men and women of the South Haven Police Department. I know I'm taking over during a challenging time, but the men and women at the police department have been steadfast on their commitment to SHPD and the excellence we represent each and every day in our community. It is the men and women of the department who will make me successful as the interim chief and maybe someday, the chief of police. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions for Chief DeBoer?
I do. I raise this to Kate. So what I'm hearing is concern of safety, especially over for the July 3 fireworks with the turnover of chiefs.
So we've, we've started planning for 4th of July fireworks. That planning was started before I even took over as the interim chief. Phone calls have been made to the state police. They've been made to Van Buren County. Sergeant Carlotta actually got the big state police RV lined up and ready to go for July 3. Safety concerns, we've done this many times. The plan is the plan. Everyone will be ready to go on July 3.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Councilperson's comments?
No comment.
Shouldn't there be a congratulations?
Yes. You can brag about her.
Yes. I am a grandmother of a beautiful, yes, granddaughter. Grace, eight pounds, four ounces, and I'm so excited.
Good for you. George?
So this past week, I was able to attend the Michigan Municipal Electric Association meeting up in Grand Rapids, and they had a really good presentation. The Michigan Public Power Utilities really have a good story to tell, and there was a really good video that is linked on a report I have. I'll give it to Kate, and maybe we can put it on the city's website. But just one statistic is, the, in Michigan, the municipally-owned electric utilities saved their customers over $400 million because of reliability and lower rates. So it's a good story, and we'll see if we can get that communicated a little bit. That's it.
Thank you. Joe?
No comment.
Mary?
Just, so Kate, if we could, at the next meeting, have an update on the donations for Emily that you could provide us? I think you were looking at a process for doing that. I, I don't know if George or Jeff have provided input on dates, but I'm still waiting for you to provide a list of dates for our code of conduct. I haven't gotten any information from you on that.
Well, I do have three dates to consider, but I can email them out.
Okay, yeah, because I haven't been consulted at all. Also, as I'm saying, I, this past school year, I've been helping the history club with their competition. Their theme was rights and responsibilities, got to work with some really bright students. And as we said before, they're going to national competitions. If you miss their presentations at the Bailey Hyde tomorrow, May 6, at 1:00 p.m. at the Scott Club, there will be another opportunity to see the students practice. And also this week, very busy, May 8, Planning Commission meeting at 7:00 p.m. Speaker Series meeting starts at 6:30. Social event starts at 7, $10 admission. And on May 9, South Haven Center for the Arts Exhibition Waterways Reflect and Connect for opening reception. So a lot to do this week. Kate, could you, I was going to ask you this, but didn't have the opportunity. So for Planning Commission, there was the Victoria Resort that was for rezoning, but that wasn't, it's not on for that. Can you give any insight?
My understanding is the applicant is considering their options and maybe is also considering a potential conditional rezoning. So they're kind of looking at their options. If they make that decision, then we'll work with them on putting out a public notice, because that will have to be satisfied.
Okay, so people were wondering if they missed the public notice, but it just, there's more discussion ongoing.
That's correct.
That's very helpful. Thank you very much. And we didn't do the minutes, so I guess we'll add that to the next meeting.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Wendy?
No comment.
Jeff?
I want to address the issue that Bishop Wilkins brought up about the planning commission chairman. Lots of important issues tonight, and I always need time to think about it. Bishop Wilkins has brought it up a couple of times, and so it was at the last meeting when Letitia and the bishop spoke, and they talked about how they felt, and then that's what gave me the perspective that I needed. One of the things that Bishop Wilkins said was that Tim Stegman is offered, you know, worked for the city for decades and has done a great job. And so while I do not support any form of racism, I don't believe that was in his heart. I'm hoping it was a momentary lapse of judgment. I then went and asked Kate, I said, can we order someone in a different committee to apologize? And she said, well, no, that's not really how it works. And I think Bishop Wilkins has been arguing beyond that, that we just need to talk about it. And furthermore, like ordering him to apologize or demanding him to write a letter of apology, if he doesn't mean it, what weight does it carry? So I hope that Mr. Stegman, knowing that he's a good person and those decades of service he's provided to the community, I know he's a good person. Hopefully, he'll recognize it was a momentary lapse of judgment, and he will choose to say the right things and mean it. I hope that's, that's the course of action he chooses. Those are my thoughts about the planning commission, and those are all my comments.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight and spoke up. Regardless of what you discussed or how you feel, I know it takes a lot of courage to come up to the microphone, so we appreciate you and thank you for speaking up. Like I said, that takes a lot of courage. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I want to thank councilpersons Jeff Arnold and Letitia Wilkins and all South Haven teachers for their hard work and dedication. Our educators make our city a better place to live and raise a family, so thank you so much. And if there's no further business, we're adjourned.